Good evening. I'd like to call to order the continuation of this special meeting of the Village Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, May 7, 2025. May we have a roll call, please? May the Secretary?
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Donahue?
Present.
Commissioner Simpson?
Present.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson is here. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Anyone would like to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while you folks are standing, anyone who testifies tonight needs to be sworn in. So if you're going to testify, please stand and raise your right hand and say that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the complete truth. And a reminder for everyone, please silence your phones and any other devices. A reminder, too, for anyone who testifies needs to sign in at the podium with their name and contact information. And yeah, if you do that ahead of time, it'll save time. Next item is the approval of the minutes of our April 23, 2025 special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Sue move? Thomas?
Second.
Sharp? Move. Thomas, second. Sharp? We have movement, second. Any discussion on those minutes? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Donahue?
Present.
No.
Commissioner Simpson?
Present.
No, no. We're voting on the...
Agree. Aye. Sorry. Yes, aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Next item, before we get to the new business, I'd like to review for everyone present here our way we're going to conduct these public hearing procedures. To begin with, there's only one case on the agenda tonight, which is a continued public hearing from our previous special meeting on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendments. Since this is a continuation, I'm not going to have staff or our consultant present again, but instead I'd just like to ask staff to provide a brief recap of our previous meetings' discussions on the zoning ordinance text amendments. And then following the staff's recap, we'll open the floor for public comment, like we did the last meeting. And as before, I'd like to adhere to the time limits, five minutes for each individual, 10 minutes for someone who is representing multiple people or groups. And then after the public comment period, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. And for this portion, the way I'd like to conduct this is just go through these proposed text amendments article by article and then allow every commissioner to provide any input on these specific sections. And that will also ensure that staff will be able to accurately record all of the, any and all requested changes and provide direction to us. And last, I'd like to note that due to the scope of these proposed changes and the information provided, it's likely that this case will be continued to a future date. The continuation will allow time for staff to make adjustments and gather further input as required. And we'll be watching a clock. I would anticipate that if we're not right getting finished, I'd like to probably call the meeting around 9:00 PM. Again, thanks, everybody, for coming. Okay. Under old business, public hearing, PZC 001-2025, requests from the Village of Westmont regarding zoning ordinance text amendments as follows. Zoning ordinance text amendments to repeal Appendix A, zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinance, and to establish a new Chapter 95 zoning of the Westmont Code of Ordinance with comprehensive updates to the entire zoning ordinance, including amendments to the zoning districts, development standards, planning processes, and other zoning regulations. If we have to continue this meeting as anticipated, I'll need a motion and a second from the board for a June 11, 2025, meeting at 6:00, which would coincide with our regular planning and zoning meeting, that second Wednesday of June. Okay. Staff?
Thank you, Chair.
You got the floor.
I'm the senior planner, Scott Williams. I just wanted, before we started with the public comment portion, just provide a recap for people that are watching online and in the audience, as my commissioners were already here last week, or last meeting. So last meeting, we had, on April 23, a special meeting to present the text amendments for the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance. This meeting tonight is a continuation of that public hearing. The zoning ordinance that we're looking at, the existing zoning ordinance, hasn't been updated since 1979 comprehensively. That's why this is a pretty important time for the village to look at these text amendments and have discussions on the future of the text itself and provide staff with general The proposed draft language was provided the commissioners on April 8 and was posted on the website on April 8 for the public to view. Since the posting of that draft, we haven't changed any language. After this meeting, we likely will have some direction to change some of the language as we proceed. We may present some of the language as well during the meeting on what the changes might be as we go along. Additionally, some of the documents, such as like the staff report and the summary memo that we've provided previously, were posted on the website when the agenda was posted prior to the last special meeting. Tonight, you have in front of you just a recap memo from staff. A lot of the staff report information from the last meeting is still relevant to this meeting, and it's kind of a good guide to the changes article by article when we go through that for the commissioners. During that April 23 meeting, we had our village consultant, Kirk, who's next to me, of Duncan Associates, present some of those key changes and the goals of these updates. I and some of the staff as well provided a summary of the staff report and reasoning behind some of the changes that we're proposing in the new text. We also heard from the public during that meeting. We opened the floor for public comment. We heard various topics. Some of them are in that summary memo in more depth, but a few things we heard include comments and suggestions for accessory structures and uses, like ADUs, accessory dwelling units, changes to the bulk standards in the R3 district related to lot width. We heard opinions on outdoor storage in the manufacturing district, outdoor dining, and the manufacturing district primary uses as well. And we also heard some comments related to downtown design regulations. As the commissioner already mentioned, due to the amount of information, we do think this public hearing will probably continue as we propose new language, depending on the comments received from the commissioners tonight and how much we get through tonight. Additionally, we provided the minutes from the last meeting. Adam, our planner, rushed to get those minutes done, so you guys had them to reference during this meeting. The full recording of the presentation that Kirk provided and the meeting itself is available on the village's YouTube channel for everybody to view. Those are usually posted directly after the meeting or the day after that meeting. So tonight's meeting, as stated, we're going to be taking in some of the commissioners' comments. We're going to open it back up for the public to comment, but there'll likely be another opportunity for the public to comment with some of the proposed changes, depending on what the commissioners provide to us. Additionally, in the staff report, we provided the comments we received from the public. We received one comment prior to the deadline on the Friday before the meeting, before the agenda's posted, that you likely were able to look over before the meeting. That's about all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions. On the summary, and then obviously, as we go article by article, I will be, as the chair said, will be providing just some recaps of the articles and those changes as we go through and some of the public comments we received prior to the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public would like to come and address the commission?
Thank you. I'm Kyle Dispenser, and I apologize if we're out of town at the April 23 meeting, so a little bit behind. We have some questions and just some things that came up while I was reading what I could, but like you said, there's a lot to go through. A lot, great ideas. I do feel Westmont needs the changes, but I noticed that we recommend, or you recommended increasing the building height in the B1A district to five stories, verse three. I often attend these meetings as well, and I know that the developers will ask for even more stories than that. The concerning part to me was that with that, you'd also be reducing the parking minimums. So we're going to have large, tall buildings, but less parking requirement for them, and I feel we already have not enough parking downtown, especially once that One North Cass property is sold. I know there's already discussion about the Sentinel Station being there, a mixed-use development, and I worry about the size that's going to go there with the minimum parking reduction. You also mentioned ADUs, so kind of wondering who's going to regulate ADUs if they do pass? And will that include living spaces above garages? I've been to a lot of meetings where that was always denied, so that would be something new to Westmont. I think a lot of people would be interested in that, but who's going to regulate who lives there? I know we have a lot of rental properties, homes, especially near me in Westmont, that there's multiple families living in that aren't related. Usually, multi-family should be one family if it's, you know, one property, not apartments. And so just wondering who's going to like regulate or supervise on that? And again, just worried about the parking downtown and how we would relieve that once we do welcome these new developments and less parking requirements. That's all.
And Wes, good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm David Meek. I was here two weeks ago. I represent the owners of 751 Blackhawk Drive. Two things, and we had a chance to talk last time, I appreciate that, I'll be brief. I had a chance actually to see a rather lengthy summary of comments that attorney Mark Daniel had provided to the commission. I think it was probably distributed to you today, if it hasn't been distributed yet.
We just got it a few minutes ago.
You just got it a few minutes ago, so if you haven't had a chance to digest it, I urge you to take a look at it. There are some things in there that he and I talked about, which I also agree with, which relate to, and I'll just reiterate this again, our concern about the regulation of outdoor operations, whether it's parking of vehicles, and I think hopefully you will allow an opening up or not regulating as intensively as you're supposed to do, parking vehicles in particular in the more intensive M and M1 districts, because I think the way it's being regulated or proposed to be regulated would be unduly burdensome on businesses. And I think that there's a way of doing that through permitted use structures and maybe site conditions, in particular with respect to screening, that would be doable and would protect, you know, the existing manufacturing and the existing dynamics between manufacturing and residential areas. So actually, Mark, on his comments on Section 3.05, Article 3, Section 3.05, has some observations in there that I would concur with. And also, with respect to outdoor storage, that was a particular concern to my client and I think others in the M district, that, again, that, too, we would hope we could see that done as a permitted use in the more intensive M districts, subject to screening. And I hope that you'll take some of his comments under advisement, and I know I had said that I would get some comments into staff. I didn't have a chance, so I will, by endeavor to follow up, and I hear that you're going to continue this to June 11, so before then, my client and I will get you some commentary. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? It's your chance, Pat. No? All right. Then let's go to the commissioners. Again, let's just start with Article 1. Does everybody have that in front of them?
Just to interject really quick, Adam will have the language pulled up on the board in front of you, the screen, so if we start discussing items, we'll try and follow along that way.
That'll be very helpful.
Can you please switch over to my computer?
Okay. Thank you.
Just to provide a quick summary on the specific article. Article 1 lays the foundation for the zoning regulations. It just establishes the purpose, scope, and guiding principles for the entire zoning ordinance. We heard comments related to some of the transitional provisions from the last meeting during public comment, and then also we heard some concerns related to the planner's dictionary and the utilization of her undefined words.
Commissioners? Who wants to start comments on Article 1 introductory provisions?
If any.
If any.
I'll start.
Good.
I don't have a lot of comments on this one, just two minor things. I was curious, under Section 1.13, paragraph A2, the first sentence reads, "Complete applications for special uses, variances, planned developments, and other zoning-related approvals that are pending approval on the effective date may, at the applicant's option, be reviewed wholly under this ordinance or the other," blah, blah, blah. It's basically saying when someone can apply under which version of the ordinance, and I was confused, when exactly is pending approval? Is that when they hand it in at the planning desk downstairs, or is that after intake review?
So pending approval is when we have a application that's in review, and they've already expended funds related to the current zoning ordinance that's operating. We provide, we would provide them with the option of either being viewed under this ordinance or the old ordinance. If it's under the new ordinance, they may incur additional fees for additional reviews because we weren't reviewing it under the old, we're reviewing it under the old ordinance prior. It's just to provide them some flexibility, what best suits them in their requests.
Yeah, I think that's entirely appropriate. I just question, maybe we can be more clear on...
Rewording it.
Rewording it to be something tangible to the applicant, such as handing it in or getting some kind of written communication from you guys so that they can plan exactly down to the day? Because I know some projects are down to the day, like where they want, when they want to try to hit a deadline, and they want to be able to know that once I give this into the planning desk, if it's complete and all the documents are there, which is a step. So maybe it can't be when they hand it in, maybe you guys have to review it.
I think my advisement would be to change it to be more of a, once the application is accepted, a complete application is accepted by staff.
Yeah.
Basically, that generates a planning and zoning case number at that time, and now it's officially under review.
Right, and then they can, they still can't just turn in kind of a half-done packet.
Yeah.
Okay. The only other comment was that the first sentence of the next paragraph doesn't read like a full sentence to me.
Building permits?
Yeah.
Okay.
Building permits may be approved for construction or developments approved before the effective date specified and for developments pending approval under this section, even if such building development or structure does not fully comply with provisions of the zoning Maybe I just don't understand that sentence.
I believe it's supposed to accommodate, correct if I'm wrong, but I believe it's supposed to accommodate when we have building permits under review to just provide, hopefully to provide clarity for staff on how it's supposed to be reviewed at that time. So if somebody gets a permit that is approved, they can utilize that permit, but if the new ordinance doesn't really allow them to do what they wanted, they're still allowed to finish out the permit because it was approved, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's just strange wording for me. I mean, if other commissioners understand it, then I'll leave it be.
But doesn't it say if it's both, construction has commenced and been completed by the due date? If it isn't, then it has to come under the new?
Yeah, correct.
But it takes you eight lines of verbiage to say that.
Yeah, I think we can definitely work on rewording it. The transition particular sections are difficult because we don't have the exact date down yet for if and when it's approved. But we can certainly look at rewording it. That's not an issue. Just to clarify.
I think it's just, yeah, something at the end of it, if it does not fully comply with provisions of the zoning ordinance, may do something because it's a hanging sentence. But I'll leave it at that. That's all I have for Article 1.
Anyone else have a comment on that?
I just had a question for Scott. On the split zone lots, was there anything in the, in the existing code that referenced that, or is this something new? You don't have to look it up.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head regarding split zone in the current ordinance. I know we generally, I believe in the comprehensive plan, we mention it, that we generally do not want split zone lots because they're difficult to regulate.
Oh, I agree.
We wouldn't look at forcibly doing anything that are currently split zoned, because we do have a few in the village that are split zoned.
Okay, I was going to ask.
The one I can think of off the top of my head is in the downtown, I believe it's the school property that is split zoned, or the bank, one of the two.
I don't ever remember anything about that in the code, and so I'll just carry on.
I believe Scott's right. I don't believe there's anything in the existing code about split zone lots, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Village Attorney, do you have a comment before we move on to anything else?
Yeah, this is a quick one. We had a resident, the first resident who spoke asked a question about who's going to enforce the ADU regulations. I don't want to forget about that, and I don't know maybe if we should answer that now so we don't forget.
You can.
Because it might take a while before we get to the ADU section.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be, it's in our accessory use section, which is kind of further down the line, so I'm happy to answer that before we get too involved. So ADUs are difficult to regulate in general when you're a non-home rule community. Those, we don't have the rights to regulate who can rent and who can be rented to as a non-home rule community. We just don't have that ability. The regulations that we have in place would also, is mostly to regulate the type and size of buildings and where things can be located. The provisions that we do have in the code that can help protect some of the impacts of ADUs include the nuisance provisions in our code. So if there's, and it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's a separate section of the municipal code regarding nuisances, so if there's a property that, under the nuisance code, qualifies as having a nuisance on the property, they can, we can certainly have code enforcement investigate those type of things.
There would be code enforcement essentially that's responsible for enforcing?
Correct, yeah.
And usually enforcement's done on a complaint basis. It's hard to see what's going on in ADUs, but they'd have to get permits, get built out, get inspected, and then once they're operational, if there's a complaint or if there's something that's observed, then code enforcement would do an inspection and enforce if necessary.
Additionally, related, I believe they had another question regarding garages.
Yes, yes. ADUs above garages.
Yeah, we would, we would be able to allow it under what it's proposed. As we mentioned in the last meeting, it's difficult to retrofit existing detached garages or attached garages to basically bear the load of the additional improvements, because usually they're not built as well as new buildings, and they're kind of bare bones, especially detached garages. So it's unlikely that they could retrofit it, not impossible, but unlikely. Likely to be new builds, new detached garages that could accommodate it.
And I would think that the complications and expenses of an ADU over a garage would bring in exits and entries, the fire department would, additional requirements, wouldn't they, for something like that?
There's certainly all sorts of code requirements that would have to be met, plumbing facilities, all that sort of stuff would have to be met, and, you know, so occupancy could be approved.
And I'm just adding, if approved ADUs in general, there would be some growing pains for our processes between fire department, building, public works, to see how we can utilize them. This just kind of lays the framework that if we do allow them, we have some rules and regulations in place in the zoning code to review it under.
I would think it would be along the lines, too, of a house that you would need like a structural engineer to certify that, you know, you could put it above the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper to tear the garage down and build a new garage with an ADU on top.
Yeah, nothing in the zoning ordinance would not require anything you just stated. That's, most of that stuff's one of the building regulations and how we review permits and building permits.
And if, I know that we'll dig a little bit deeper into ADUs, but I know Kyle may or may not be here for the whole meeting or the next meeting if it gets drawn out, and if she has questions, then usually, you know, a lot of other people might have questions, and since this is a zoning ordinance and we anticipate that the elected officials are going to be watching what we're doing. The approach with ADUs is, it's kind of a new zoning thing for a lot of folks. Certainly, it's fairly new in the suburbs, because usually you see ADUs being introduced, really kind of, there's a missing middle housing. There's kind of a, like a need in an overcrowded area to find other ways, to find ways to live. Out here in the western burbs, we like to think that the need is aging in place, you know, extended family and such like that, so I believe that some of your concerns were, well, can you regulate renting to just anybody? And the answer to that is no, because we don't have home rule and we don't have those abilities. Does that create difficulty in maintaining those? And it would be treated like any other rental. So we don't have direct rates to access unless a renter is making a complaint about, you know, not having a utility or something happening inside, but usually we deal with that from the outside, or we can deal with noise or, you know, other things, parking issues that arise. parking issues that arise. So staff looked at this as, well, the request was made, can we make these available? But as Scott indicated, it doesn't solve all of the questions on, is it easy to build them? And I believe that if, if you have an existing garage, was it built for those kind of structural loads, where the foundation's built for that? Probably not. But it does give opportunity to someone that wants to build one. It does give opportunity to someone that wants to build one in their own home with a separate entrance and kind of like a little mini apartment in their own home. And the, the growing pains piece of it is, you know, we do have building regulations, fire regulations. How are the utilities going to be run, especially if it's, you know, to a separate building? Is it a separate tap? Is it a tap off the existing house? Not all that's figured out yet. Zoning is basically just saying for the use, that it is a permissible request to do a deeper dive on. So hopefully that helps everyone that's watching. It was an excellent question. I'm just taking advantage of the question, so.
Yeah.
That also reminds me of the short-term rental.
Come to the podium, please.
ADUs kind of go hand in hand with short-term rentals, which I saw was mentioned in the last meeting as well. I don't know where you stand on short-term rentals right now, if it's still up in the air. Again, you know, who's enforcing that? I feel like ADUs and short-term rentals are pretty similar, so I figured most of the questions you answered on that would go with that, too. But both new, two Westmonts, so something to keep an eye on.
Do you have an opinion on short-term rentals, as long as you're there?
You know, as long as I understand sometimes the need for it, like construction, you know, maybe you need just to rent with your family for six months or so, but I don't think we want to get into like the Airbnb VRBO thing. You know, Westmont's a small town, everyone kind of knows each other. I really like that about Westmont. I think there's plenty of great hotels around here that people could stay in, and that we don't need to do short-term rentals for that quick income for people.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we kind of got sidetracked into section seven, so let's return to, to article one. John, do your final. Any other discussion, comments in, in article one? Okay, let's move on to.
Chair, just one quick question.
Sure, sure.
It, it confirms the map. Is the same map being confirmed with this ordinance as well, or is the entire map going to be getting changed?
There, there is no proposed rezonings tonight.
Of any?
If anything, if anything's approved, obviously, after village board approval of any of these text amendments.
Yeah.
As proposed now, we, if everything's approved, we would look at rezoning properties, but that'd take place at a separate public hearing.
Understood.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to article two, residential districts. Scott?
Yes. So article two revises regulations for residential districts. That's your R1 through R6. So it's from single-family, attached family, attached housing, senior housing, and multifamily. The key changes are the inclusion of minimum lot depth of 120 feet, which is currently in our land development code, which is our subdivision code, a separate chapter.
120 or 125?
125. And that's just a transplant directly from that code. We have changes to the minimum lot width for detached houses in the R3, R4, and R5 zoning districts from 60 feet for minimum lot width to 50 feet. We have also changes that coincide with that in the R3 district to reduce the minimum setback to five feet. That integrates our existing easement requirements of five feet on each property beside of a property. We have proposed eliminating maximum floor area ratio for residential properties. We have also changed the method in which we calculate density for multifamily from being a bedroom count to a square unit basis, or square footage basis of a property. There are no changes to the density, minimums and maximums from the existing code. We tried to match it as best possible with the new calculation methods.
And did you discuss that final building height?
Oh, there are also changes to accessory building heights for the detached accessory buildings to 18 feet, from 15.
And that's a different.
Technically, it's in both sections, just because we listed in the bullet table. We would talk more about in the accessory use section.
All right, understood. Scott, did you cover FAR?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry I wasn't paying attention.
Your.
We don't, we're not going to go to the public after each.
No, I would just.
Okay.
That was just a follow-up.
Understood, understood, yeah. Trying to confuse myself. Okay, commissioners, comments on residential districts. We'll start with Commissioner Lynn.
Yeah. I think, from, from my experiences, that I found that, and, and I've, I've made this note times before, but that there's a combined, let me see, the, the combined lot coverage and building coverage. A lot of villages, a lot of villages have separate building coverage versus lot coverage. When I say lot coverage, that's also another term for impervious surface, in, in a sense. So they, what I found in my line of work is that, that by combining the two, that, that it's really limiting to the, to, to new single-family homes being built. I compared, and especially for corner lots, so, so for, I, I did a comparison between, no, I, I did a comparison with a home that I designed on, at 102 South Lincoln Street here in Westmont, compared to another home I designed in Elmerst, which was at 316 Wilson Street. The, the house on Lincoln Street here in Westmont was 60-foot by 150-foot lot. So it was a bigger lot than the one in Elmerst, which was 57-foot by 140-foot. The, the, the maximums of, of each, though, that I, that the builder was able to build a house in Elmerst that's about, I think it was like 700, 800 square feet, about 800, no, sorry, 700 square feet larger than the home in, in Westmont, even though it's on a smaller lot in Elmerst. There, there's a number of things, like with, say, the, the large setbacks in, in the Westmont code, and then also with the, the combined lot coverage and building coverage, that, that leads then to like a very small house, or like for a very small house, a smaller house relative to our neighbors' properties. In, in a sense, I've, I've kind of noticed is that on, on a number of properties in Westmont, it's almost, if a person wanted to build, say, like a 4,000-square-foot house, which I know that, that's, that's a really large house, personally, I think that's a incredibly large house, and that, but, but, but there are people that, that want that. If they wanted that, they almost would have to turn to another neighborhood, another town, in order to build that. So I kind of saw that, that being kind of a handicap to the, to Westmont. And of course, we, we may, there might not be that large of a demand for 4,000-square-foot houses in Westmont currently, but of course, our, if our zoning sticks around, if this zoning revision sticks around for however many decades or, or what, I, I would think that it'd be nice to allow for the future development of, of homes of larger sizes. Just to kind of give you an idea of like, why, why that combination of lot coverage and building coverage kind of make kind of weird, like bizarre outcomes, is that, say, many homes today, many, many people today want a three, a three-car garage on their home. But if they do a two-car garage, they could actually get more square footage for their house, because, because that, now they have less, because a two-car garage would have a smaller driveway leading up to the house. And now that driveway for a three-car garage is actually going to take, because you have a combined, combined coverage limitations, that wider driveway is going to have to take away from square footage from the house. So there's, there are, kind of gives and takes to it. Also, the, the larger setbacks of, I think it's a, is a 35 feet for the street side, yeah, 35 feet in a R3 zoning district, that, because it's, it's set back that far, like, and that's more so than, than other villages, in, let me see, in, let me see, in the, in the comparison property in Elmerst, it's a 25-foot front yard setback. On the corner side yards, corner side yard setback in Elmerst, it's only 10 feet. And now that's, that's, you might think, my gosh, that's too small, but that's, that's for a home that's sold for well over a million. Do you mean it's not, it's not, like a less desirable because of these setbacks? But that, because you have 35-foot setbacks on both the, the front and corner, then, then that you're going to increase the amount of driveway leading to the house, which then, because of the combined coverage, coverage limitations, then reduces the size of the house that could be. So there's, there's like a, like a funny interplay between, like, like between the setbacks, the coverage limitations, and especially on corner lots. Corner lots are especially hampered by, by, by some of these codes. So that's something that, in doing home designs before, I, I found that that was, like I said, that kind of a handicap to the village. And maybe I'll, I probably, I'm probably repeating myself, and I apologize.
I'm going to, for my newer commissioners, I just want to, for lot coverage purposes. So lot coverage includes any hardscaped portion of the property on a single-family home, or a single-family lot, or other lots, where lot coverage is in play. That includes things ranging from the building, to the driveways, the patios, to decks, all viewed the same, regardless of pervious versus impervious. So lot coverage is lot coverage. In 2012, there was text amendments to decrease the lot coverage from 40% to 35% to mitigate some of the flooding concerns at the time. There's, there were clauses made in the existing code to go from, for administrative approval for properties that aren't located in known flooding areas generally, to build up to 40%. But the, the, if they're not in one of those locations, they can only go up to 35% for the total lot coverage. In the proposed code, we aren't looking at changing it, only because it is coupled with a lot of our stormwater regulations, because of those provisions. If we were to change it, we'd likely have to look at some of our land development code and stormwater ordinances, so that we're not overencumbering properties related to stormwater, because that's avenue they wanted at the time to reduce it. So with this, we're not proposing that change. Obviously, we'd look at it in the future, but with, with the, the text right now, we weren't, we weren't proposing it.
Right. I hope it's considered, and thank you for that. Sorry, did I interrupt?
No, no, I was, I was just giving the background, and then I have a second thing I'll talk about in a second.
Can I?
Yeah, that I saw you.
So because, we take advantage of the fact that when, we have a lot of new commissioners, so I apologize if I'm, I'm repeating stuff. But Commissioner Lynn is correct. Other communities do, sometimes do a breakout of your building coverage versus your overall lot coverage. Westmont has never done that, primarily because the drainage is so poor in Westmont, using just one number is the way that they, they decided to go. So as much as planners like to separate themselves from engineers, this number that's in the code is really driven by a lot of engineering background. So what Scott was indicating, that when we approached this zoning ordinance rewrite, there are a lot of broken things that we're fixing, but to change that number and decide if we want to have a breakout of two different percentages, which is warranted for discussion, it would take a lot of engineering research based on, since 2012, when we made that decision, what have we done regionally? How have we improved the stormwater? Because, you know, we've got alleys that are now built with very nice impervious brick, or pervious brick.
Curious.
So it warrants a much larger study to say, should that number be modified? And we recognize that. We wish we could tackle that with this text amendment. It's going to be something that we have to tackle in the future.
Right.
And then I think Scott was going to speak specifically to setbacks.
Yes, correct. So we did, we had, I'm going to give this some background, because between when we posted the language and the last meeting, there was a meeting with developers of properties for single-family homes, where we were in taking information. I was not part of that meeting, but stuff came from that meeting regarding what you just stated about setbacks. So we did look into changing some of the language. We do have proposed right now, and I don't know if Adam, if you're able to bring that up on screen, and this is for discussion, this is not what's in the proposed code, but what we would look at changing. The, is it number note five, Adam?
Yeah, it's note five in the current drafted language.
Yes, the proposed code. Under the bulk table, so it's under, what is it, section 2.05. If you go under the whole table, on page 23, there's table two notes, and it's number five. That states right now that the minimum street side setback is reduced to 25 feet, and the minimum interior side setback is reduced, reduced to five feet for lawfully established and duly recorded corner lots in existence before the effective date specified in section 1.03, such as reductions are necessary to ensure buildable lot width of at least 30 feet. We do think it's worth discussion tonight to reduce some of the setbacks. And Adam, if you could read it directly from the, I just can't read it from here, the proposed.
Yeah, so for the proposed change, it would read as, the minimum side setback is reduced to 15 feet, and the minimum interior side setback is reduced to five feet for lawfully established and duly recorded corner lots in existence before the effective date specified in section 1.03, if such reductions are necessary to ensure a buildable lot width of at least 40 feet. So that's a reduction in the current from 25 to 15 to allow the buildable width to expand from 30 to 40 feet.
And that, sorry, and that's not, that's not a contextual thing, or is it, or is that just for, is that for all the corner lots?
Yeah, this would be separate from contextual. When it's listed in the zoning ordinance, if I switch over to the setback section, you'll see footnote five, it applies to the street side yard for all detached houses in all district, residential districts.
Okay. Because, and that was what I was, I'm glad that that went down to 15 on the corner side yard setback. Say for the, for the, for the front setback, is that still then 35 feet?
That one would be still eligible for the contextual setbacks. The way this footnote reads is that it's applicable only to the street side yard, so not the front street yard.
Yeah.
And then contextual setbacks for some existing properties would be for the front as well. So some of them could be built closer to a certain amount.
So can I translate that?
Yes, please do.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong. So that means the front yard could be a minimum of 25 feet setback, if the contextual, the houses on either side allow that contextual to bring that house up closer to the street. So for my new folks, 35 feet is kind of the rule we established as, as front yard setbacks. I'm going to say it was in the 80s, but especially in these older sections of town, none of these homes are set back 35 feet. In fact, if you see a new build, you can see it's set further back than a lot of the older homes that are closer to the street. What we did a few years ago was we amended the code and said, well, if the houses on either side of you are as close as 25, then you could match it. This new code kind of formalizes that in a better way, and says it's a contextual setback, and basically, you take the houses on either side and kind of take the average, and you can bring the house up. So for the architects in the room, it means that you can get as close to 25 if the neighborhood has that condition already established. The side yard adjoining a street, which is usually these cross streets, it used to be 35. We allowed it to go to 25 with our old contextual provisions. This proposal would allow it to go to 15. So you did say in Elmerst that you got to go to 10, so it's not as far as Elmerst, but we are coming from 35, down to 25, down to 15. So.
And additionally, and we will likely touch on it in the accessory structure section, things like porches are now able to encroach into that setback to a certain amount, but we can discuss that more as we get to that section.
And the last piece is, so why didn't we just do it really simply and say that, that side yard adjoining the street is 15 feet? Why, why do we do it as a? Why do we do it as a calculation and say you get a minimum of forty feet of buildable width? And that is because you will notice that in our old sections of town, our corner lots are exactly the same width as the other lots on the street, which are sixty feet wide. If we were subdividing today, those corner lots would be required to be twenty percent deeper. So seventy-two feet, is that my math? So basically, those lots would be deeper lots if we were designing today. But obviously, in the old sections of town, our corner lots are not deeper than any of the others. So if you have a corner lot that has a nice wide width, we don't necessarily want that coming to fifteen feet because you've got plenty of lot space to still build. So we wrote it that way as it's based on how wide your lot is and based if you have a narrow lot that you are guaranteed a minimum of forty feet of buildable lot width that way. So if I had a corner lot that was a hundred feet wide, it doesn't mean I can build it at fifteen feet from the side yard. It means that I'd probably have to maintain either that twenty-five-foot or thirty-five-foot setback because I've got a big lot. There's no reason to try to squash, you know, close to the street, so.
I would mention those, and thank you, that helps with the fifteen feet on the corner side yard. For the front yard setback being the thirty-five feet, sorry, for the combined coverages, I understand that there's engineering involved. There's permeability concerns and things like that. But the thirty-five-foot front yard setback kind of hurts you if the, if people are going to have driveways that lead to it. So now you're, that's almost a way to encourage more impervious surface to get to a house. Whereas you could have had the house more forward to the street and a larger backyard for that, the desire of more greater drainage, you know? So that's something that I wonder if the setback, the large setbacks, are also hurting us in the terms of the permeability of the town.
I think, and I'm, any commissioner can jump in before I start talking. The thought with the contextual is because we've really seen in the older parts of town, many of the older parts in town have alleyway connections. As we slowly start to improve those alleyways, it would be thought that the detached garages would be from the rear, or attached garages could be accessed from the rear rather than the front. But I think your point has validity.
I think we have, we have a very interesting mix of housing structure in Westmont. We have some stuff that's a hundred years old, and we have some stuff that was built in seventies, eighties, nineties. A lot of those newer things, those newer homes are at a thirty-five-foot setback. So if we just across the board changed it to, say, thirty or twenty-five, it could perhaps change the dynamic of neighborhoods. Now, most of those neighborhoods aren't at a redevelopment stage yet, you know? And most people don't add to the front of their house. If it was built in the eighties, they add to the back or go up. But we could examine that if that's where we want to go with that. What you'll see reflected in this is we were trying to be hyper-accommodating to try to address the old parts of town, which are the most difficult to build in, so.
Thank you all, sorry.
Okay, good discussion.
Can I ask for, before we move on?
Sure.
Is everyone amenable to changing that side yard adjoining a street, like Adam had read, to basically a, it would allow fifteen feet instead of twenty-five? Because that gives staff direction when we make changes to the draft for the next meeting. Is that something we want to do? Or I'll ask John, is that something we should poll for or something? I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to
Straw poll.
Do it, is just a straw poll. Who's in favor of that?
I say aye.
Aye. Yeah, it makes sense to me, yes.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe, did you?
Yeah.
So I think we had a unanimous aye to forward that. So I just want to make sure staff gets the right direction and we don't forget anything tonight, so.
Does anybody have any comments related to that in particular before we move on? Or anything else in the article due?
I have just a question. The contextual setback, is that limited to only structures that are built prior to the date of this ordinance?
I believe, and Adam, if you could go to the measurement section, sorry. That has infographics, so it's a little easier to understand. We take into account the two nearest lots on either side of the subject property, regardless of when it was built?
Okay. So going down a street, the houses could slowly creep towards the street and through time.
Yeah.
Okay. Because, I don't have any other questions on the setback.
Yeah, I do, yeah. Sorry, are you, do you have more to say?
No, sorry, that was it.
Actually, with the contextual setbacks, does, like, what authority has to, does it have to be a surveyor than the site source?
Generally, we have the ability, how we currently operate, because we do have something very similar in the current code. We will use basically two items. First, we just go to DuPage County Parcel Viewer to get an eyeball view because they have aerial imagery. What I usually do in these cases is to see if we have documentation internally for Platte surveys of those when they were built or from previous permits to make that decision. Otherwise, we would probably ask for some verification from whoever's submitting the permit. And they can always discuss it with us, too. And I'll note that the contextual setbacks also relate to building additions, not just new houses.
Scott, just for, I know we had this conversation before, and I think it might come to the benefit of the fellow commissioners.
Better?
Oh, sorry. We were talking about decks, and I'm looking through, and I want to make sure that that's not going to, wouldn't be more appropriate at a different section. But as we're talking about the lot coverage, and the idea that even if underneath, let's say someone builds a deck on the back of their house, even if underneath that deck it's permeable, we don't give them credit for that. So I just want to better understand, is this a time where we should consider incorporating that?
So I think it's related to the lot coverage general discussion that Commissioner Lynn mentioned. It would probably be better to discuss it then. I do know there were text amendments after 2012 because in 2012, with some of the amendments to the lot coverage section, we indicated that decks, I think permeable surfaces of some kind, like pavers, were viewed at fifty percent for lot coverage. So if you had a hundred-square-foot deck, we would only count fifty square feet of it as lot coverage in our calculations. That was removed from the code. And I don't remember exactly when that was amended. I have to go back and check and the reasoning behind it. But I would say with lot coverage, that's probably a general discussion. I don't know if we're looking at trying to change it today or with these text amendments. I think it'd likely be part of the larger discussion.
And I'd fully support that. My thinking is, how many, if possible, how many decks have been built since we pulled it off? Because to me, if there's not that many, that wasn't what was causing the flooding. But I recognize there's a difference. If they're building it over cement, that's impermeable. But if they're building it over dirt and just putting the posts in concrete, to me, that's a benefit to the drainage it stores.
We do run into a lot of times during permits with residential properties where they provide it, or built the deck in that time period, and they come in for a permit thinking it was under the one set of rules, so they can try to change it in some way. Generally, the policy has been they can remove or replace what was there square footage-wise, regardless if it's a deck or patio. Currently, that's how it functions.
Scott, it was about 2020, so it's fairly recently that, so for years, we said that decks and permeable paver patios could be counted at fifty percent. So basically, the way we treated decks was, well, yeah, most of the water probably goes under the deck, but some of it does sheet off in a direction of your boards, and they could, you could be aiming it at your neighbor. So that's where they arrived at this fifty percent rule. And they found over time, it was just hard to navigate, especially if someone built it that way and then over time changed it to something else. So I think in 2020, that what the office was trying to do was kind of separate the engineering piece out of the intensity of how much you're developing your lot, which they said, well, no, a thirty-five or forty percent intensity of zoning is okay, independent of this engineering piece that really is kind of integrated into where that number was derived. So they got kind of halfwayed where they wanted to go. So when we do investigate the lot coverage and should there be a separate building coverage, I don't doubt that there will also be some analysis on what you're saying, so.
And permeable pavers as well, as part of that same discussion?
Well, I'm sure it would be part of the discussion. The issue with permeable pavers is you can install them as permeable, and all it takes is a few years of not doing the right maintenance on them, and then they aren't operating that way any longer. So whereas a deck will probably stay a deck for quite some time, permeable pavers, the, I mean, because they have you put gravel between the cracks of those, and you get plants that sprout up, so people go and over sand them and, you know, try to fill in the cracks or do something to stop that. So permeable patios are much harder to guarantee a life of. But it will probably be part of that discussion as well, so.
Yeah, good point.
I'm sorry, which discuss, we're saying we're going to have this discussion later.
So, so we're not tackling that lot coverage number with this text amendment because we got to bring the engineers in. They're going to say, is it time to do another stormwater survey, which hasn't been done for twenty years in the village? And what was the net effect of all the good we've done over the last twenty years? Does that mean that they can relax those numbers? I would love to say that it is purely a zoning number. But the fact that we have so many stormwater issues in this town and that is how they chose to try to mitigate a lot of it over time. So that discussion will be probably targeted to that percentage and bring in all those engineers, so.
And if and when that discussion happens, we would come back with text amendments to discuss it at planning and zoning with likely looking at neighboring communities and the recommendation from the engineers.
Okay, that's fine.
Just a small point, but this is, I don't, is there any, is there anything about lighting, say? Like, I sometimes wonder about the alleyways here and say, just, it's just a thought of, like, say, new, any new garages to have, like, a certain amount of lighting that casts, to light up, help light up the alleyway? I don't know if that's something that's
We, yeah, we're not proposing anything related to that in particular. We are instituting more lighting regulations in general. It basically went from two lines to almost a whole section, three pages about. But we're not requiring the lighting. We're looking at more at mitigating effects of lighting than anything.
Did you have a further comment on lighting or?
There is, I know a builder that built in a subdivision that was down in the south suburbs. I don't know, and this was a good few years, this was about twenty years ago. But the subdivision was put in, and they actually did not have street lighting. What they did instead is that they had a code within, whether the association or the municipality, that each home to have a lamppost and that there was a code to say that the lampposts should turn on at a certain time of light. They could choose from five or six or a dozen different types of lamppost styles. And that was a way that they lit up the streets in the subdivision. Well, even though I kind of, in some ways, I kind of don't like the kind of, I almost see that as an overreach to kind of force people to put on power to light the streets, and I would rather that on the village's dime. But at the same time, I just can't help but see commuters coming home, like, in the dark, like, in the middle of winter, and thinking that, well, Westmont has only, like, a street light once every other corner. It would be nice to get some more lights on the streets or even more so at the alleyways and things. And I wonder, should such a similar strategy of, like, having, if the, if there's not, say, village lighting provided, should, say, new developments or what, try to make up for that difference? So it's more of an idea. I don't know how often it's been tried. I could find out for you, of course, the name of that subdivision, if you wanted to, an example to look at. I don't know it off the top of my head right now. But that's just, that's more of an idea that I could understand where, like, I don't, yeah. I guess that would be part of the zoning code changes, but I don't know if you guys have explored that, so, I mean, it's
Yeah, we weren't looking at it directly. I know, and correct if I'm wrong, because I'm not in the subdivision code very often. We have a separate section for land development when we subdivide, when there's a subdivision happening. Sometimes it can require installation of lights, I believe, with some of the required roadway improvements. Because the community here and just the makeup of the community, we usually don't see very large subdivisions anymore, where you institute, you know, brand-new roadways everywhere and lighting standards and all of that.
When I meant, when I said lamppost, I meant, like,
Yeah, personal. Usually, usually we'll see that with HOA regulations. I would be weary of instituting the zoning code for new houses to require it.
No, I agree, and, yeah.
I think that you're bringing up good points. Westmont, for many years, has been, I'm going to say, very proud that we don't have a lot of streetlights. What you'll see reflected in the lighting ordinances is what, as Scott said, trying to mitigate lighting because there is a big surge of trying to be more dark sky compliant. And I've seen what Commissioner Lynn is recommending. I see it, like, when you have a big townhouse development, like, all the lights on the townhouses pop on at the same time. And that's really because the developer didn't want to have to do streetlights, too.
Right.
And it's a warranted discussion. I think it probably starts better with Public Works and Public Works Committee because I think it's only if, it's an acknowledgement that we want lighted streets, but the village is not willing to do that in a municipal way, how do you then accomplish that goal? So I don't want to say that we should recommend it in here. It is a good idea to start discussing with the Public Works Committee, though.
Okay, I'm going to move on to section three, or article three, rather. Business and employment districts. Scott?
So article three, as the commissioner stated, is business employment districts. This deals with the B2, general business district, C1, commercial, M, manufacturing, M1, limited manufacturing, OR, office research, and OR1, which is office research, limited office research district. We consolidated very separate sections in our code into a single article when they were all separate ones previously. We removed the B1, limited business district from the business district provision, or article, and moved into a separate downtown article, which is after the article three section. We eliminated the supplemental street setbacks in our current code along major roadways as some of the regulations for them were outdated, and many of the properties don't abide by them, and we would see constant variances for supplemental setbacks on some of the roadways. We increased the minimum street setback in the B2 and C1 districts from ten to twenty feet to accommodate the removal of supplemental setbacks along some of the major roadways like Cass Avenue.
Scott, can I interrupt on supplemental setbacks? Sorry to interrupt you. I don't know that everyone and everyone that's watching understands what the supplemental setbacks are. setbacks are, so I just briefly want to touch on. Usually you have a front yard setback in one of these districts. So I believe, I believe our B2 front yard was 10 feet. But then the supplemental setbacks basically said, well, it's 10 feet, but if you're on Ogden Avenue, that's a much faster highway with a lot more traffic. 10 feet's too close. Ogden Avenue has a setback of 30, 30 feet. So if I was a developer and I was trying to figure out how to build a new building, I would go to the table and I'd be like, oh, it's only a 10-foot setback, not reading a little footnote that said, there's a supplemental setback that says, if you're on this road, it's 30 feet. So what we're doing is we're eliminating that secondary footnote and basically trying to split the difference to, so, for example, that B, that B2 district was 10, it would have been 30 if it was on a main high, on the main road, so that's where we arrived at the 20. And of course, all of our numbers, you know, our consultant did look at what other towns are doing, is that comparable? So Scott and I use supplemental setback as a term, term every day. I just didn't know that everyone understood what that was.
The last change I just want to mention is, we also have, I believe, is the removal of the FAR from commercial buildings.
Why was that removed? Is it antiquated or it just--
It was as recommended by the consultant.
Yeah, our, our view is that the FAR really wasn't serving the village's needs or really was much in line with sort of modern planning practices as we, you know, look at other jurisdictions. Between the building setback requirements, the setback regulations, building setback regulations and the building height regulations, you've, you've really defined the maximum envelope of building on the lot and the FAR was just a kind of superfluous number that somehow connoted high science, but really served no real useful purpose in terms of real, meaningful limitations on building scale in the village. So we thought the other regulations were serving that purpose, just an opportunity to eliminate a needless requirement from the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, since Kyle's still here, I'm wondering about lot coverage versus FAR with regard to adding ADUs. Would it affect the ability for any given lot, one way or another, using FAR versus lot coverage? Is that--
I can take this one. FAR in our current code does not include detached accessory buildings or garages or basements for single-family homes. It only includes basically the livable space in a, in a house, is how we calculate it. The removal of it in the residential section wouldn't have an effect on ADUs. We have a specific restriction on the square footage of an ADU as proposed.
Thank you.
I have a question for the consultant.
Sure.
So I fully agree, getting rid of the FAR on the residential. I, I don't have an issue with that. And I think the only reason why it's bothering me a little bit is I've seen where it's come into play in a nearby town for a commercial building. So for those who are familiar where the Drake offices are, in Oak Brook, next to the Drake Hotel, there was a limitation based on their FAR and the number of floors that they could build, but they're built almost on a berm. They got around it because they could walk out, basically their first floor is the basement, but it's not because it's classified as being in sub, subfloor on one side. And so if we, if we were to adopt this and get rid of FAR, that would be an example of where we couldn't restrict it. I, I don't think, it might not be applicable, and again, I'm one of the newer guys on the board, I'm just trying to understand that, in that scenario, that would be one where it would be supplemental or beneficial to the village. But barring that, is that really, are there any other examples or, you know, real world examples you can give where you've seen this in commercial? Because I'm limited to where I think we're built into a berm and you have similar to a walkout basement, but at a commercial level. What other scenarios would that ever play in for a FAR?
In a, in a--
You're in control with--
In a more suburban setting where we're not talking about buildings of great scale that, you know, could be, you know, nine, 10, multi-downtown level, Chicago downtown level buildings, I've just never seen, I've never really seen it come into play--
Okay.
--in the way that, like, you're, in the way that responds to your question. I, I just don't think it, the limitations, you know, essentially across the board, the, the existing code limits the amount of floor area on the lot. Floor area, building floor area, principal building floor area in the lot to 80 percent of the area of the lot. And it, and in doing so, it somehow implies that, that high math is a better way of, of establishing building scale rather than regulating the overall height and the amount of open space on the lot, you know, from the setbacks. And so, again, for those reasons, we'd, we'd kind of recommend it's denial. I, I see it used very, less and less frequently in a, in a more of a suburban setting.
And controlled more by height?
Yes, yes.
Definitions of maximum heights.
Yeah, it's a more, I think it's a more predictable control on the scale of building that might, that might occur on a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Can I interject really quick? I, we, we don't run into the issue a lot in Westmont when we're viewing commercial properties from running into a maximum FAR issue. Only time it really comes into play is when we're looking at more residential or mixed-use buildings.
And we, we also can't forget, there's not just setbacks, landscape requirements, but we have stormwater requirements, which it's much cheaper to do it above ground and then it becomes not buildable, and then we have our parking requirements and obviously depending, if you keep going up, then you need more and more parking--
Yep.
--and then the parking starts limiting the size of the development. So, but Scott's saying, you know, I've, I've got a longer history with some bigger projects. We were never hitting the FAR maximums when you kind of factor in all those other development requirements.
Yeah, I guess, you've been a while. Has anyone come in for a variance on FAR for commercial?
I think the only ones I've seen on FAR were on residences.
And nothing commercial?
Yeah, so, and that, that's my recent memory, so.
Say for the B1 district, I, like, I see that it has a, there's a front, that you're getting rid of the five-foot front yard setback. I can understand if that was like a burden on, on, right?
Can I interject really quick?
Go for it.
B1 is handled in the next article, so I don't want to--
Oh, it's all being cut out of this?
Yeah, we're removing it from the Business and Employment Districts and moving it to the downtown specific article.
Okay, and, and we're going to be--
We'll talk about, yeah?
Right, awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Article three? Let's look at article four. Downtown districts. Scott?
So article four is related to downtown zoning districts. There's some major changes to this article and provisions in it. Most of it is new. So article four provides detailed regulations tailored to the village's downtown and transition areas around the downtown. We're proposing two new districts, the B1A, which is the downtown core, we're ma, bringing in the B1 Limited Business District, or downtown edge, as we would call it, and the R7, which is the downtown residential district. The, the regulations at play offer a more structured framework for establishing the proposed zoning districts. These districts are majorly designed to reinforce and enhance the downtown's compact, vibrant, and walkable character, also trying to maintain the transition areas into the single-family homes that surround the downtown. Many of the changes being proposed here are related to, or come directly from our comprehensive plan and the design guidelines. So getting into some of the specifics, I just want to mention before we start, we're not proposing rezoning anything tonight, as I already mentioned. That would come at a separate time if and when approved with these changes. The allowed building types in this district, in these districts are categorized into four categories. One is storefront buildings. Those would be your buildings where you would see larger first floors, taller first floors with large windows. General buildings, which you can think of as more office-oriented with mixed-use or residential above, and then row buildings, which is residential, and detached houses that are currently scattered throughout the R7 district, or the R6, or R6 district, R5 district currently. The, the B1A would be oriented to the core of the downtown, near the tracks, is the thought. With the downtown core, we're proposing to increase the maximum building height to five stories, while the B1, which would be the downtown edge, as you progress out from the middle of the downtown along Cass Avenue, the minimum or maximum story height would be three stories.
Scott, can I interject?
Yes.
I had Commissioner Lynn, are we going to put the--
Oh, the map?
The map?
Yes, I think Adam has on his computer, sorry. I meant to mention that before I started speaking.
And, and the reason the map's not in, because we're not adopting--
Correct.
--that map?
It's just for reference.
But it is for reference, so you understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on the left, you have the concept one, it's just kind of generally what we're thinking about. Of course, nothing's being proposed tonight, it's just for thought. And then to the right is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which is what recommended these two districts.
And so I, I'll just briefly, so on the north side of the tracks, I believe the area that we would propose to be this B1A would go up to Irving, so basically the first two blocks, and then south of the tracks goes down to Richmond.
So the downtown core would be the five-story building height maximum for new proposed buildings and then the, the B1 or downtown edge would remain at that three-story limit as it currently is in our code.
Is that the orange?
It would be the purple, is the downtown edge. Pink is--
On the case, okay.
Yeah, and then downtown residential is that transition area, which is the yellow along Burlington and Quincy. Those would be proposed to be rezoned to R7, which would allow for the townhouse and general buildings to be built there, as we see scattered throughout there right now. It would allow those to be built. The other item with R7 is we would allow for those single-family homes that currently exist to continue to exist as, as non-conforming to a degree. The regulations for those existing single-family homes, they still are able to have improvements on their properties, decks, patios, that type of thing, and they be reviewed under the R5 regulations, which aren't proposed to change, and that's what it's zoned right now. We would just carry over when we do permit reviews, we'd look at the R5 if the property is a single-family home.
So all this will be rezoned once this goes through?
If we, if we go through with approval of this, we would look at doing a village-initiated rezoning of these properties.
All at one time?
They would all be notified properly, they get mailings, we have requirements by the state in our zoning ordinance to notify. There'd be a public hearing, just like we have tonight, but it'd be specific to those rezonings. This code is just laying the framework for those districts. As we've seen stagnated development in the downtown compared to surrounding communities, the general thought is if we are able to focus in on specific design, designs for the downtown and provide greater flexibility where we know we want and had variances and large developments happen, we'll see those developments take place. A lot of times we get developers that come in looking at the downtown properties and we're, they're very limited in what they can do without requesting variances. One of the big things that we're changing in the current code, or from the current code related to Cass Avenue, is we're removing the minimum setback requirement and doing what's called a build-to-zone. A build-to-zone basically is where the building can be placed in relation to the property line. We want to encourage closer buildings to the street frontage rather than pushing them back farther, like we'd see in single-family residential properties further into the downtown. We want to provide more walkability, we want to provide people a reason to keep walking in the downtown so they're, they're coming to that downtown to, as customers and as residencies. A lot of times you run into issues where, and it's generally in, in the planning field, if you have large gaps near downtown, usually people start to turn around. So if you have a large parking lot, that's not serving the public, and it's serving a separate property or a vacant lot, people usually tend to turn around because they think that's the end of the downtown area. So requiring build-to-zones rather than making the building setback where it looks like there's nothing to continue to look at as you walk further down is, is the reasoning behind the build-to-zones rather than having a minimum setback. Additionally, many of the buildings in the downtown currently are non-conforming to our minimum setbacks. I would say a decent amount. We wouldn't, we have setbacks in our code currently, not just minimum setbacks in the district, but also supplemental setbacks that push them farther from the street, which is somewhat not intuitive to what you would typically see for a downtown. So this has very large changes. I'm happy to try to delve into it more. Other things I want to explain is we are also providing what are really design recommendations for certain buildings, so a large portion of this is design regulations in which we are providing information on, I believe we talked, we had a, somebody comment on, you know, shutters, requiring different types of shutters. These requirements can be waived without variance requests. They're more of recommendations. If you're fulfilling what is, what we typically want to see in the downtown, some of the regulations can be waived. Those things include transparency of buildings, so transparency on the first floor of a building, we want to encourage in the downtown core, but if they're achieving it in some different way, we're able to waive it to a degree. Some of the other design guidelines that are listed in the bulk tables in the section go through what can and cannot be waived. Some things like building height, if somebody, if a building's trying to go up to four stories in the B1, the downtown edge, they'd still have to come in for a variance and we'd have a public hearing and they'd have to prove that they, the uniqueness of the property is the reason they need it. In the downtown core, they're allowed to go up to five stories because we've seen that succeed in the downtown and we've approved multiple times variance requests. It provides developers more, more security on their requests rather than producing a lot of money to propose a lot of things that we want in the downtown, but they have to come through with the risk of being denied those things. But we also want to keep in mind that our downtown is surrounded by single-family, so that's why we're keeping some of the transitional pieces intact. That was a lot, sorry. If anything I missed, feel free, staff.
If it's all right, I'll, I'll put my spin on it. So a lot's happening in the downtown, is what we want to say. So right now, we kind of have homogenized our downtown, it's all the B1. It treats it all the same. So rather, whether you are close to the train or all the way up on Naperville, we have the same design regulations for any of the buildings that are there. So what we're trying to do is actually reflect the 2013 comp plan that said we should make these changes a long time ago that we never did, that basically said, you should come, you should, your downtown has, has a difference between some of the blocks, you should come up with specific regulations based on that. And actually, the comp plan, I think, said that, that what they considered the core actually down at Norfolk, not all the way up at Irving. But we're saying, we're kind, we kind of see it more up towards Irving, that's the second block, right?
No.
So, so what, what are we doing? So first, I'm going to talk about the downtown itself and then I'll talk about that residential piece of it. So the B1A is what we would call the core. That is your more intensive stuff. That is the first two blocks to the north and the first block to the south. north and the first block to the south. So we heard a comment tonight that there was concern about the five stories. So basically, what we're saying, in that district, in what we consider the higher intensity district, we are raising the height to five stories. Now notice, we don't have a height and feet, because we do have what we consider, a properly-designed building usually has a much taller first floor, because people like high ceilings for the commercial space, and then the floors above it. So we're talking about stories. What we've learned over time is that we get a lot of requests, and sometimes they are seven stories or more, but our code has always been basically about three stories. So whenever a developer approaches us and says, "Well, I want something taller than three stories", everything above that is basically a risk. It is, the village may or may not approve that. And they're very sensitive to designing buildings and paying for plans and going through planning and zoning when there's risk involved. So what we're hoping by bringing it up to five stories is, we've established that the village is comfortable with five stories, not seven, not 10, five. So we hope that we get less and less variance requests, and they just meet what we have established ourselves as what we want them maximum to be. So the way it works now is they kind of throw something at us and say, "What do you think about six stories? What do you think about seven? What do you think about eight?" It's always hard for this commission and the board to say what's right, because our code was way down here at three, so what's right? So this is trying to say, we are establishing five is right in the first two blocks. Outside of the first two blocks, we're still calling that the B one, so why are we not changing that name? Because that is most similar to the current B one code, it is still three stories. The other difference between these two districts is when you're in the core, in that intensive area, we have requirements that you have to have continuous storefront, nice big windows, because when you're, when you're in a good downtown, you want to look in the window and see what people are doing. If anyone's ever walked up the street, usually where you start considering turning around is when you hit the Bank of America parking lot. You know, it's like, should I really go down that far? You know, because you, you start losing that continuity of what is out there for me to shop at. You know, is there another restaurant down there? Most people don't see neat from, you know, where they're in the core. So that downtown core has a lot of requirements for continuity of those buildings. When you get into that B one area, it starts allowing some of those parking lots to permeate, but it does have restrictions on how much those parking lots can permeate, because we still want to maintain some continuity there. The other thing that we haven't talked about yet is we have building types. So what are the building types? So basically, the buildings that are allowed in that more intensive core are what we call storefront buildings. So basically, they must have commercial on the first floor. They can be mixed use, they can have residential above, they can be fully commercial. I believe they can be fully office buildings, too. When you get outside of that area, we start allowing what we call the general buildings. So what is a general building? That could be a 100% residential building. So we're starting to lose that commercial piece as we move away from the downtown, because we want to concentrate the commercial as close to the core as we can. And we have some of those buildings now. I mean, there's an apartment building just north of, I think Norfolk, maybe, or Irving, I'm looking at you, Jill, because you know sometimes more than me, but there's an older apartment building that's there, exists in our downtown now, you know. So this starts allowing those general buildings. Doesn't stop one of those storefront buildings from coming in, but it starts to allow fully residential buildings as you get further out. The other building type, and this is where I'll tackle, the R seven district. So we've always recognized that the tracks are more appropriate for higher intensity multifamily. Now, I'm not talking about apartment buildings that are 10 stories tall, but, you know, row houses, something like that, townhouses. Right now, with the current R five requirements that we have there, we have density requirements, it's hard to get many units on there. For those of us that were on the commission when we approved the townhouses across the street that never got built, density was a big issue there. So basically, row houses free up a lot of those requirements so that we can get some townhouse development over there. In fact, the R seven doesn't have a density requirement.
Yeah, it's based on form-based code.
It's, it's form-based code. So what is form-based code? We want to see what your setback is, we want to see how tall you are, we want to see that you meet the minimum requirements. We are less concerned about what the actual density count is, as long as you meet the design requirements. So we think that will spur some of the development. We hope that the brick, or the stone townhomes that are over here, more of that type of development along the tracks. The last thing I want to do is I want to tell you how broken our code is. So you heard Commissioner Lynn ask about a five-foot setback, you heard Scott talk about setbacks. The actual setback in our downtown is 17 feet. There are virtually no properties in our downtown that are set back 17 feet. And so where do you get that 17 feet? It's actually a really crazy calculation that says, we measure from the center line of Cass Avenue and go 50 feet out on each side. So I think probably the convenience store with the parking lot up front, that meets our setback. You know, maybe Toon before we, you know, got rid of it, meets the setback. But, but our downtown, you want buildings that are at the sidewalk, and that gives you the, the kind of dimension that you want for a downtown. That is how broken our code is, is that when someone would approach Scott and say, "I want to build a new building in your downtown," Scott would have to say, "Well, you need to set it back 17 feet." And we're trying to make this code developer-friendly. So that's, that is my watered-down version of what we're doing, it is much more complicated than that, but that is how it helps me understand what we're trying to do.
Just wanted to note, one thing, I may have already said it, we have those design regulations in place, and that's to provide higher quality in the downtown. So we have design, basically, recommendation guidelines integrated into the code that could be waived if they're able to get either approval through here, or if they're, the zoning administrator determined that they're meeting the requirement elsewhere on the building in some fashion, but they're still, maybe it's, it's, they're using a different type of stone or something like that, or brick. They're more in play for telling developers who are proposing things, this is what we want to see material-wise in the downtown. We, we don't want siding, we don't want low-quality materials. So I just wanted to mention that as well, but I'll let Doug, our chair, continue.
I believe the, the comp plan says destination architecture is what we're trying to, to get, destination architecture. We want people to come because it's a high-quality downtown. What Scott's saying is, although we are integrating it into the code, it can be waived. So that's very important to know for the developers. So it doesn't say you must build the building out of brick, and if you don't want to build it out of brick, you need a variance. It basically says, we want it built out of brick, or here's another list of all the high-quality materials, or how, this is how you can mix the materials. But ultimately, if we deem, and the board deems, that it's still a quality development that meets the intent of the district, it can still be approved. So right now, our design guidelines is what we use. There is virtually no enforcement, it's actually a separate document, that says, here is how we would like stuff built. The code puts it front and center in the developers' hands when they start approaching development. It gives them flexibility on how to meet those minimums. But it does not tie their hands to they absolutely need variances if they have a different idea of what quality means. And what, what do I mean by that? You know, and the two architects sitting here will correct me, but a lot of modern architecture doesn't necessarily meet the traditional downtown standard, but it still may be destination architecture. It still may be very dynamic and very high-quality. It's just, it's mostly glass and metal, you know, or other new materials as they come out.
Those are more design suggestions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a comment. Let's look up there.
You, Scott, you mentioned build-two setbacks, how can you define that? I can make a guess, but can-
If Adam can pull it up. So each type, each, I believe it's each building type, and depending on the zoning district, there are what call, what are called build-two zones, basically where we want the building to be set. It's kind of the opposite of a minimum setback. We want it to be closer to the street in some fashions, sometimes up to zero feet. So as long as they're in the zone, and if you look at the infographic, it's that hashed area, it's kind of hard to see on that one page, Adam's pointing it out with the mouse. Those are the build-two zones for buildings.
The, my, like, one, just, I don't, I don't know if, perhaps this encourages or not, but, but in the, in the downtown district, in the B one, I should say, that, I just wonder sometimes, is that the narrow, the sidewalks are very narrow, and I wonder, it'd be nice to do, like, a build-two, but, but a five-foot setback, or maybe 10-foot front setback. That's not a very builder-friendly thing, because I know that a lot of builders would want to maximize square footage, but, and that's, that's not, of course, for anything of the, the existing buildings that say for, there's a good few vacant parcels, or, or that are underdeveloped spots between Norfolk and Naperville, I, that, I just wonder if they were to build a new building, it'd be almost nice to have a little more sidewalk available for it. Now, that's on their, technically, on their property, so I don't, but, with the Quincy sta, Quincy Station here, they, they did a setback, of course, but that was more to provide themselves with balconies above, which I, I understand, but then the, the sidewalk is extended to that, to that, into that setback, that they, they, they kind of provided. So I, I was just wondering, is there, is there anything that kind of encourages more width, width to the sidewalks and, and along Cass Avenue?
My, my initial reaction would be, if we were to do that, we'd have to look at increasing the build-two zone for some of the building types and districts to accommodate that, which we can certainly look at doing. Right now, for the downtown core, which is the more intense buildings, we have zero to five for the build-two zone for those front property lines. We could look at increasing it as well. For the B one A and the B ones, the downtown edge and downtown core, for storefront buildings, oh wait, sorry, that was for storefront and storefront buildings of the downtown core and downtown edge. We also have, for general buildings, the building type being general buildings in the B one and R seven are five to 20, and then 10 to 25 in the downtown residential area, because they're residential properties, so it makes more sense to have them setback a little further as you transition to single-family homes. But we can certainly look at increasing that in certain areas, if that's the direction.
So I think you're starting to get into what the village is doing separate of the zoning ordinance. So we don't have a downtown plan, and Amy Reese with Public Works has been tasked, and Community Development will be working with her, on how to come up with a downtown plan. So what I heard you say is that some of our sidewalks are pretty narrow.
Yeah.
Now, a downtown plan would set up rules and regulations such as if you're to, so if we said, you know, the village needs an extra 10 feet, 5 feet on each side, so as projects develop, we should get another 5 feet of right-of-way. The downtown plan would formulate that kind of model, if that's what we want to do, because the danger is, is that we can ask for an additional setback, but that doesn't guarantee that it is a benefit to the street. It doesn't guarantee that the sidewalk would be widened.
That's true.
So if that was truly where we wanted to go, it would be more prudent to come up with a plan that says, this is what our plan is. So even if every mid-block, we said we wanted an extra 10 feet when those properties develop, because we want to do a nice crosswalk that, that comes through, and on each side of that crosswalk, we want nice plantings, and we need extra space. That downtown plan is where it will, we'll have those discussions and figure out how we want the downtown to develop. And if that downtown plan says, you know what, we want to come up with a plan to try to push the buildings back, but we don't want to take the extreme step of trying to get more property, we can always come back and amend this. I, I would just caution that if we do it now, before the downtown plan is done, then we're kind of driving a plan that we don't know how it will end up.
Sure.
So the, the beauty of the zoning ordinance is, even though we say we haven't done this in almost 50 years, we do modify the zoning ordinance quite often, it's just we don't modify it comprehensively like we are in this process.
The, thank you. It's, it's not only just for maybe increased sidewalk width, but sometimes I, I think, too, that even commercial buildings would, I think it could, might, might help the design, like, of the buildings, if there was a little bit more insulation in the facade, where there's, if there was, it's a very traditional idea, but like to say, like, to have bay windows come out on the second floor of, like, a commercial building, or, or different, like, to have a bit more articulation, or larger roof overhangs that come out, and different things that you wouldn't, you would, that it wouldn't be, I mean, I know it's a classic American clean-cut, like, straight, straight, flat facade, like, what do you call it, like, Michigan Avenue, the street wall, but, but sometimes if the buildings are setback, but that's still their property, so then they could allow for different can levers and different things, and that might actually, I, I think that could be visually appealing, too. Now, that, again, I understand, that's not for this, that's more for your downtown, your downtown design that you're talking about. Is that going on at the same time, then?
Well, I, I think, I believe that we have not gone out to RFQ, RFQ yet, so, but it is in the budget to start that process.
And are they gonna, are they working with, because that's something I was concerned about with this, is, are they working with, into urban designers? Because I, I would almost would like a design, because I, I do architectural work, I don't do, say, urban design myself, and so, but I would, I would almost trust the eye of, of an urban designer to kind of get involved somehow with, with some of this, especially the downtown.
I think at this point, they're just putting together the RFQ on how they're choosing the consultants, so it's way too early for me to try to answer that. But it's been spearheaded by Public Works, but Community Development will be an integral piece of that. And usually those are somewhat of a public process, just like what we're doing here, so.
Okay. I could keep going, if you want.
I just wanted to mention one thing related to some of the articulation and architectural features. There are, some are listed in the designs we're providing here. It gives, like, infographics and examples. We have some regulations related to shadow lines, breaking up the building a bit, staggering it, that type of stuff.
Yeah, but if the building is built up onto the zero lot line, then, then they can't really reach out, they can't, they can't leave a pass-
Correct, yeah.
So that's, right, that's why-
Wouldn't accommodate something like that.
Right, that's, that's where I'm thinking, articulation of a greater depth, but then that would require the whole building, the base of the building to be setback. That's just an idea.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I could keep going.
Sure.
Sorry, but maybe with the, the different districts, like, the B, the B one district, and looking at the, the map, I, I kind of think, I know that stops just north of, maybe like, three properties north of Naperville, but I, I would almost imagine, I'd like, at least going, driving up to, say, the library often, there's, there's a whole lot of vacant parcels that are considered, I guess, the R four general residence. I don't, I just, when I, when I see that many vacant properties, that, like, and that's north, yeah, going up, say, to the library or so, that, that just makes me think that there, that there's, the zoning doesn't-
there, that there's, the zoning doesn't, doesn't make them appealing to developers, that, and that that could, that those could also be a pretty good spot for, to do multi-unit type of buildings. Like, might, yeah, probably not storefront on the ground floor, but just the fact that there are, there are so many vacant pieces, makes me think that there's, there's a problem with zoning. A builder would normally want to buy it and make some money on it, so.
I'm going to state two things, and generally just for the discussion. When we're looking at lines on the map that was provided, those are just general indications of where we're thinking for it, nothing's permanent. Some of the discussions we've had in the past regarding the downtown, we kind of went in the direction of playing mapmaker, is what I like to say, and showing properties downtown increasing in size. That is a discussion for the comprehensive plan and not the zoning ordinance. Could even be a discussion during rezonings, but we don't want to look at changing where the downtown lies currently in those downtown residential areas with the discussion tonight. A lot of those properties north are zoned, I believe it's R4, which is somewhat of a transitional zoning district for multi-unit developments. It does not allow as much density as the R5 district that we currently have. With the, the items here, we're now looking at changing that in particular. We also just recently had discussions on density for the R4 district just at the new year, where we changed the density to increase it.
Do, maybe.
But I, I agree with you that it is an issue related to vacant lots in that direction.
Right. So, so what you're bringing up, that's comprehensive plan, and actually, we have money in the budget that, once we adopt the zoning ordinance, we then will move forward with updating the comprehensive plan. That actual area that you, we know that is going to be an up-for-debate and up-for-discussion piece. Our comprehensive plan was not well-done for redevelopment. It was kind of treated as if it was all-new development, and some of our areas haven't flourished like we would have hoped. In fact, I think our comprehensive plan, in particular in that area, says it should be commercial, but it's zoned residential, which is part of the confusion the developers have had, is like, what do you want it to be? You have it zoned as residential, but your comp plan says commercial. And I think at one point, we thought that the commercial would go all the way up to Ogden, and maybe that's probably a bit of a lofty goal for that block, because we saw a lot of great success with those townhouses that got built, and we get a lot of inquiries for that kind of development up there. So basically, what we're doing here is, we're trying to say that the existing downtown B1 will be split into two zoning districts, or three zoning districts, if you look at the residential. Doesn't mean that the comp plan won't come forth and say, actually, those districts should be further. But that will be the next thing that we tackle. There's a lot of updates, especially, you know, just before COVID hit, the Amazon era hit, you know, and kind of retail was retracting. A lot of communities are looking how to densify to support the businesses that are in town. Those will all be discussions with our comprehensive plan update, so.
Thank you.
All right.
I have some comments or questions. On page four, five, where it's talking about, well, I guess, my first question about this section is, the introducing building topology and form into permitted uses within zones, I think there's a, you've done a pretty good job of describing and showing example photos of these three different building typologies. Who gets to decide in the end, I'm assuming it's you, the village, what building, what if, what if a building is in between these typologies? What if it doesn't fit neatly between one or the other?
You're looking at me, but I'm going to look at the consultant.
I may have the consultant jump in as well. But the building types, the topology, are broken up into what we would like in those separate districts, so we have general storefront resident, or row homes. The determination can be up to the zoning administrator about what we think that building type is ultimately. We have, we would have to fit into that definition or regulation, how we describe it. It has the sep, or the bulk table regulations, we would have to abide by depending on what type of building type it is. Ultimately, we do have the ability, when the site plan is rolled, to have it come to the commission for final approval, or for recommendation for approval and final approval of the village board.
Okay.
It is somewhat uncoupled with permitted uses or principal uses. That's a separate section. So a storefront building may be able to allow other types of uses, especially uses. Doesn't have to be retail in particular. Obviously, it's more geared towards those type uses based on the topology of the building and what usually we see with, you know, retail and restaurants, what they're looking for.
Is this something that, do we know if adjacent communities are, have this kind of topology built in to their downtowns?
I know for the distinction between downtown core, downtown edge, and downtown residential, Downers Grove is, has developed like that when they instituted their new zoning ordinance, I believe decades ago.
Okay.
We have other communities in DuPage County where it's broken up like that, and it helps spur some more development. Other communities, it was always done like that. We instituted the B1 district after the fact for, for the zoning ordinance, so.
I mean, I think it's, I think it really helps clarify what the village is after, like, in each individual area in terms of building form. I'm, I'm, I think it's a really good improvement on the downtown specifically. I just wanted to go over a couple numbers and, and maybe critique or question them. So on page four dash five, districts B1A and B1, the upper story height maximum is listed as 11 feet, and I think that might be a little too low. And I'm, what I'm thinking about the scenario is like a mixed-use building, or a primarily residential building with penthouse amenities, either a penthouse suite or communal amenities, like a terrace and a, you know, amenity room, and spaces that might need higher ceilings. By the time you put a drop ceiling in and mechanical and structure and all of that, having a limit of 11 feet would probably get you to, at best, a nine-foot ceiling for a, for a rather large space that could end up being at the top story of one of those kinds of buildings. So I would recommend increasing, you know, we have the overall height limit. I don't see the harm in increasing the upper story limits to something more like 13 feet, that would allow assembly-type uses on the top floor of such a building. I also want to say, on the next page, at the very bottom, number 17, where it lists vertical division with shadow lines every 60 feet, I think it's great to have this requirement. I think it can be much shorter span than that, because the materials that we're talking about, like Masonry, for example, needs expansion joints anyway, the material capacity is, is just leaning itself to something more like 25 or 30 feet, and I don't think it's asking much. 60 feet is a long distance to not have a vertical shadow line, and I don't think it's asking much of a developer to incorporate something on a more regular rhythm than 60 feet, is my opinion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Would you say that for the B1A and B1?
All right. I would say that, yes. I would say that for all three of these building types, you wouldn't want to see something without vertical striation. 60 feet is just a long distance for, for no vertical striation of any kind. Sorry, I just have to flip through here. The, on page four dash eight, for districts B1 and R7, the side setback, the minimum side setback is five feet in R7, or, sorry, it's 10 feet in R7, but it's only five feet in R4. And I would think that R7 would be denser than R4, so I'm questioning if that's the right number, or if it shouldn't match R4.
I think, depending on the R4 location, we have other regulations, so if a building's going higher, providing more bedrooms and dwelling units, they have to increase their setbacks for multifamily in the R4, because the R4 allows kind of a plethora of different building types, single-family homes included. So when you get to a certain height, I believe we have increased setbacks, but I'm open to that discussion as well for reducing it.
Yeah, even in R3, it's five for an interior setback line. So that number stood out to me. I'm questioning that, if that number is right. And I, I guess I would also question, I'm not as uncomfortable with this, but for your row, row-type building, the first floor limit is 12 feet. I could potentially see office functions going into a row-type building, and they might want to have a higher ceiling as well. They might want to have a 10-foot or 10.6 ceiling, or 11-foot ceiling. So I'm, I'm wondering if that's too restrictive for the row building type apology as well on the first floor.
If I, just really quick, I don't believe in the R7 district, we would permit or allow a office to be a principal use on the property. Home occupation is a different discussion, but I don't think we're looking at allowing it, for row buildings particularly.
Sure, but it's listed B1 and R7, so this could be a row district going in B1. So maybe we separate those two out if we need to. Page four dash 14 is talking about building design and major facade materials. There's a clause that says, side and rear facades not visible from any street or civic space may use an approved minor facade. What do we really mean when we say not visible from a street? Because I'm, I don't understand how I could not see the side of a building at some point as I'm walking down the street, since there's setbacks and everything. So what are we really trying to say? And how can we be more precise with when we are going to allow this minor facade material? I mean, I think it means when it's not prominent, but it's hard to define that.
Yeah, I think it could use some rework.
What paragraph is that?
That was.
4.12.
Paragraph B.
B2C.
Yeah, B2C.
B2B.
Right in the middle of the page. So I think we should work on clarifying that perception. Page four dash 16, when it's talking about minor and major facade materials, it's listing now it is allowed, or, you know, what is allowed where. Under glass, G, curtain wall, we should add, curtain wall is a type of glazing assembly. There are other types that we would not care if storefront was used or window wall was used. These are different typologies of systems. So we should, we should either just remove the word curtain wall and just say glass systems, or we should add these other systems that would technically be functionally the I think that's all I have. Yep, that's it.
Thank you. What architectural term did you use for, for building form or building types?
Typology.
Typology?
Yeah. I did have one more thing, so I'm skipping through. So page four dash 22, where it's talking about visibility through glass. I just double-checked the nomenclature here, where we're saying minimum of 50% transmittance factor. That's usually called visible light transmittance. Architects are used to that phrase. And additionally, visible light reflectance, or exterior visible light reflectance. That's kind of the standard industry terms for those numbers. The numbers seem fine, just the terms. That's it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Article four. It's eight o'clock. Offer, if anyone wants to take a five-minute break and get right back to it, speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed. And a little unusual, ma'am, I saw you came later after public comment was completed, and Brian, you did, too. Would either of you like to quickly come to the podium, identify yourselves, and address First of all, raise your right hand and say that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the complete truth.
It is.
Thank you. Now, sign in and give us your name.
I signed in, I thought, do I need to sign in?
You're already signed in. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Awesome. Anyway, I appeared you before, I just had a quick addendum.
Your name.
Sorry. Brian Schering, I live at 5719 Buck Court. I appeared at the previous meeting, and I had three suggestions, which were, one was to consider eliminating the parking mandate if the lower parking minimum requirements prove successful in our aims, creating an express permitting process for accessory dwelling units, and then lowering the minimum lot size to conform with the new minimum lot widths and depths, or, yeah, widths and depths for each zone. One other suggestion I just wanted to tack on was, right now, it looks like it says ADUs, the maximum height is either 18 feet or the height of the main unit on the property, whichever is less. I would suggest maybe considering raising that to 20 or even 22 feet, just to allow for a little more range of designs, especially on smaller lots. The, I was playing around with what you could do with 850 square feet, and on a narrower lot, with just a little bit more clearance, you could have eight-foot ceilings that are up to code, and then you could potentially do like a, a smaller, narrow two-story one. Just, it's something to give a little more, I was saying to Scott in my email, I think ADUs are kind of like solar panels, where people understand the benefits in the abstract, but until you can talk to your neighbor and ask them, how did it go? What was the process like? How painful or painless was it? We're not going to see that growth, so if we can make it as early, easy as possible for the early adopters, and just give them the mostly way in terms of design, I just think that would be a good thing. But that's all. Thank you all, and I'm looking forward to where the zoning is going, so thank you for all your work.
Okay, thank you.
May I just interject really quick?
Absolutely.
Just because we passed a section already related to lot area. You'll notice, and as was mentioned, lot area for the change in residential properties, so we're reducing the width for the, some of the R3 to R4 and R5 properties to the 50 feet, and reducing the setbacks to five feet. We aren't looking at changing the area from our current code to basically be a ratio or a, to equal the exact amount from, if you multiply 50 feet by 125, we're not looking to make that the area, which is the minimum. The thought is that if we're having decreased width, we still want to maintain a certain amount of area for them to have the buildability on the lot, so they're not running into issues for building a, a single-family home on the property. Our current code does not work that way, so our 60-foot lot width minimum, in our current code, multiplied by 125 for a lot depth, does not equal our current amount for lot area. And it's to help prevent overdevelopment in single-family neighborhoods, really. Anyway, that's all I wanted to mention, and then he did provide comments via email that should have been in your packet.
Yes, we all read those. Okay, let's move on to article five, special purpose districts.
All right. Article five relates to special purpose districts. The special purpose districts are those zoning, sorry, special purpose zoning are zoning-related districts and uses related to, that don't fit neatly in our current zoning code. So, right now, proposed in this article is the B three district, which is largely a single property in the village. It's a resort-oriented zoning for that property. It has very special regulations that are largely being carried over from the current code. We are introducing a new district called the public institutional district, which is in particular to help accommodate some of the governmental uses, as well as institutional uses like schools. In this article, we also outline the proposed change in, from planned developments to planned unit developments, by removing planned developments, which is an outdated term. Planned unit developments would have a special use process attached to it, and it would allow for more creativity with the land, as outlined in that section. Again, related to these, some of these new zoning districts and regulations, we are not looking at rezoning properties today. Likely, what would follow for the OR, or the public, sorry, public institutional district, the PI district, we'd look at rezoning some village-owned properties if it was approved as shown after the fact, and there would be a public hearing regarding those rezonings as well. I believe that is largely what I have as a short, short list of those changes. A lot of the planned unit development structure of how those are approved are in the administration section in the zoning ordinance.
For the PI district, I know the village is a separate entity, but, and as far as these other ones, are they going to be required to?
No, we would not be looking at requiring them if, and you're talking about, let's say, park district properties, school district properties.
Yeah.
We wouldn't require anything. We would work with them if they do want to rezone, as those would be primed rezoned properties, because they have uses that are public or institutional, really, uses. We're not going to be forcibly rezoning any of their properties after the fact unless directed to. It would be largely on a, if they're proposing something new, a new park, we would look at seeing if they could rezone to the properties, to a PI property or zoning district. Because the PI properties are meant to be scattered throughout the town, but to accommodate some creative structures, like parks have gazebos, they have swing sets, they don't have a primary building usually, which is difficult in our current code to accommodate. So, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look at those other districts and institutions.
Basically, we would handle it very similarly to how we do now. So if you remember, a few years ago, the park district was trying to do a lot of improvements on different parks. And we're like, oh, those parks were established before they got a special use. So at the time they approached us, we said, okay, this is a time for you to establish your special use that you never had. So in this case, we'd say, this is a time for you to rezone. And the benefit of rezoning is rather than asking for three variances, because you have five little buildings on this park, and you need variances because we don't have that ability to do that in our code, you just rezone to the P district, or the PI district, and then it's much easier for you to process the things you do on that piece of property. So that's really the intent of what it is.
And to add on to what Joe said, that these, many of the uses allowed in the PI district are still allowed in some capacity in other districts, especially in residential. So that wouldn't say that creating this district means that they're no longer allowed elsewhere. It just means that they want to come in and do something, they might want to take advantage of this rezoning, because it might be easier for what they want to do with the property.
Have any of the uses, have we allowed for any other uses in these, any of these districts? It's a little hard, I know, because it's on there, but would it be the same way, would it be struck out or bolded, or would, has anything been changed on this?
So the PI district, if you go to the principal use table on page, what is this, six, two, and six, three, the last green column is the PI districts and what uses would be allowed. Most of them are still special uses, and those would be for new, newer uses being proposed on a property. Some are permitted uses. The example I give for permitted uses in that district relates to neighborhood parks. Usually, neighborhood parks aren't the parks that have programming at them. They don't have baseball, they don't have baseball fields or football fields or the like, or where parking lots are normally at. And we spoke with the park district in particular to make sure our definitions match theirs. Those would be permitted in those neighborhood areas, because the idea is that neighbor is going to use those parks. People outside that neighborhood usually aren't going to use those parks. Those program parks would be special uses, as, as our current code currently dictates for a lot of the residential zone properties. So a lot of it's carryover from what our residential code allows use-wise. It delineates more some of those governmental uses, it breaks it out a bit more. So they're, they're not just, we have like libraries, governmental uses, in particular hospitals, safety services, rather than just all of them being listed under governmental uses. But generally, most more carryovers that were allowed in the R three district in our current code.
Understood. Is the, I guess, I don't want to, I'm not trying to draw an error, if that's what it is, but if you look on page six dash two, and you go just like fifth line from the bottom, where it says entertainment, spectator, and you look at outdoor, the difference in the size of the S's?
Oh, the font.
What I'm trying to do is, is one, what it was, like, are all the bigger ones what's already there in existence today, and the lower ones are what we're changing it to?
No, I think it's just, that's a font issue.
Got it, it's just the title. So nothing else in terms of use for any of these has changed, except for the PI stuff?
Generally, there are some uses, and we'll get more into it for the other districts in particular.
Okay.
Once we hit the section, we'll go through some of those changes. But for the PI district, because it's a new district, technically, there are new uses in general being allowed in certain areas, depending on the zoning. Obviously, we don't have any properties zoned that currently.
Okay.
So I can give you a distinct answer, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you.
Do other municipalities have a district like that?
A lot of, many municipalities do, especially in the Chicagoland area, and it's to accommodate mostly when, when uses have campus-like structures, you'll see this instituted, because they're institutional uses.
For those of us that have been around a while, if you remember, Bob Gleason was trying to propose a no-zone for many years, and that no-zone was to serve the governmental uses at the time. And what it was basically establishing is that to provide services to a community, sometimes you need facilities that don't meet the, the exact requirements of the district they're in. So for example, we just did, you know, we're doing the new water tower up by the high school. Well, that's zoned R three, that's zoned residential. It only has a 35-foot height maximum. So it requires the municipality to go and ask for a variance to height. Now, it doesn't absolve a municipality, or a church, or, you know, one of these usages that's allowed there from any requirements. It just makes it more geared towards the fact that they're providing services in our unique uses. They're not usually, I'm building one building, and I can meet all the setbacks, and I'll provide the parking, because we're going to have customers, because they usually don't have customers, they just have employees. And you try to insert them in different places in your community that weren't necessarily built for those type of buildings. So this makes it more streamlined. So, the park district will be very happy, because we have strung them through a lot of processes here, and put like residential standards on their Taiwan or Park, or, you know, something like that. So it remedies a lot of that. And although I don't know that it is widely popular here on, in the Midwest, when I was in, in the West, institutional districts, public quasi-public districts were fairly the norm out in the West, so.
We did discuss PI district previously at a, at a discussion with the commissioners, and I think CDC as well, which is our community development committee. We did allow for greater intensive structures on the building, so the bulk standards like increased to allow greater height and that type of thing from what we last discussed. So, as directed.
All right, let's move on to Article six, principal uses. Stand.
So Article six regulates principal uses on private property. It defines land usage within a specific zoning district by listing, listing the use as either allowable, permitted, or special, or as allowable as either permitted or special, or not allowed or prohibited. The uses themselves are grouped, are classified into groups, categories, and subcategories with supplemental regulations and special conditions for the, for specific uses that we deem have greater impact usually, and we want to wrangle them in a bit. The goal with the new uses and how they're listed is to provide greater clarity from our current zoning code. So a lot of the existing permissions in the zoning code are carried over. Obviously, we have new districts, so there are some changes to it, largely minor in nature. The replacement of basically outdated and overly detailed uses, and we're categorizing what we call baskets, rather than specifically calling out uses. We're carrying over a lot of the supplemental regulations, such as distance requirements for specific uses. And then we're just enhancing the use table itself, so it's able to be handed out to the public and provided on basically one or three pages. Currently, the code has it, I believe, in like six or eight different sections. Yes, open to comment.
My, 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 sorry, if this is in regards to this table, like the...
Correct.
I was a bit confused at the beginning, when I, I was expecting to see the ADUs in this table, but I understand that it's on another part of the code. I just wonder, should ADUs be added to this, or did...
We can certainly institute them. They're considered accessory, so that's rather than their accessory use section under their own regulations.
And that they wouldn't be, because they're not, yeah, they're not, because they're not principal, then they don't allow, okay, I get it. I just wonder if, like, people would be lost looking, expecting it in this table, like, but...
We generally advise our clients not to attempt to include accessory uses in the table, because there just are so many types of building structures and uses that are classified as accessory or ancillary, that it's, it, it implies, by putting a few rows in the table, it implies that that's a universe of allowed accessory uses. So in our view, having a separate article for accessory uses with some general language saying, this isn't the entire universe, and then to call out those that are major, major accessory uses in nature, is, is probably a preferred approach. But I, we do frequently get questions, like, well, where's the ADU row? Because people think of that, let's say, use for most people, as planners, we kind of have, put them in little categories, and, but, but that's the reasoning behind it.
Sure. Is, are ADUs allowed in every R district, or no?
They're allowed on lots containing a single detached principal dwelling unit. So a detached house, any lot that's allowed a detached house, or has a detached house, can have as proposed an accessory dwelling unit, regardless of the zoning. In most cases, it's going to be an R zoning, yeah. Yeah, in all the R districts.
Thank you.
We did have comments related to this from the public at the previous meeting, related to manufacturing district, and how, and additionally, how we have a criteria for classification of uses that's listed out on page six dash five, six point oh two D. It lays out how we classify uses internally. So when, what does that mean for the commission? Not a lot, but when we deal with businesses trying to find a location in the village, they usually call us, and we have to determine based on our list of uses, what use that is. Sometimes they have hybrid uses on a property, meaning they have different uses taking place on the property, it's not easily categorized as a single use. So we have provisions related to hybrid uses, and then just general authority about how we determine a use and where it fits. Now, if an applicant, or somebody we're talking with, doesn't agree with that use determination, they have all the ability to appeal that decision through our appeals process, and come before you for that decision. But I just wanted to mention that for the classification of uses, because we did have comments on the previous meeting. In the manufacturing district and industry uses, we had some comments related to allowing primary, a principal use for outdoor storage yards, I believe it was. We aren't currently instituted in this code, because in our current code, we don't allow it. So we were carrying over what those uses were in the previous code. The idea behind the use table itself, it's just to provide clarity for those businesses trying to move in, and developers in general. We're trying to keep, keep most of the uses that are currently in the zoning ordinance, and just carry them over as best possible. Are there any particular uses anybody would like to discuss, and where they're allowed and not allowed? It's a very large table, so.
Scott, I have one, I don't know if it's controversial, and I know one of the residents brought it up before, and I've dealt with it frequently with the surrounding towns. Has the village given any indication, or the new administration, what they're looking for in terms of short-term rentals, if they're looking to take a position? I'm kind of basing if this is all carryover, it leaves it a little ambiguous, saying 30 days or more.
So, we, we did bring it to a community development committee meeting for discussion. We did not delve, we were asked not to delve deeper into short-term rentals in general. We do have lodging uses particularly outlined in here, those are your hotels and motels, outlined in this chapter, and it's shown in the principal use table, but...
So Scott, correct me if I say this, and I feel like I might say it incorrectly. I believe the direction that we were given was, we don't wish to regulate them at this time, so we don't want an expressive allowance or denial that they can exist. We don't have anything in particular to say they can or can't exist. And that was after discussion, did we want them in our downtown? Did we want them in residential? And the CDC discussed it at length, and I think we maybe had a discussion topic here about it, probably before you were sitting on here, but the direction, we, we thought we would land on a, you want them or you don't want them? And the answer we got was, in Westmont, they really haven't percolated to be an issue that we feel we need to regulate.
It can also be not allowed in all zoning districts by municipality if they want.
So as, as it stands, just from the legal standpoint, if we were to classify it, since we don't have it defined, it'd be lodging 30 days, we could rely on saying, hey, it's not allowed unless it's more than 30 days.
Correct. There's no express authorization to have short-term rentals in the zoning ordinance.
So that's where flexibility comes in. Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. So, since everyone's so quiet, it makes Joe talk. So I just want to say that this is tremendous for us, just to have all the uses in one table. If you ever looked at our old list of uses, you had to go into each zoning district, so basically you had to go 20 pages just to see the, the list of uses that were in that district. And then if you scratched your head and said, I don't see my use, well, then you have to go back to all the other pages of all the other districts to see if your use is allowed in those districts. This puts it all in one table, so you just go to this one table to try to figure out if your use is allowed somewhere. And then the way that we have the classifications, that you start with a group, your category, and then your subcategory, and then this ability for the zoning administrator to make determinations really helps staff. Because right now, in 50 years, there have been a lot of new uses that have come about, and some of them aren't listed in our zoning ordinance, so it's really come a tremendous way.
I believe, John, you had some suggestions for some of the used classification, general authority section to include some language. Am I incorrect in thinking that? That would be page six dash five, six point oh two.
I don't verify... I think we were going to necessarily change it. I, I know the, one of the attorneys who was here last time expressed concern about how staff would interpret the groups and categories and subcategories, et cetera, to determine whether a use was allowed or not. And I know we talked today about possibly tweaking the language, but I don't have draft language to provide right now.
So if we do look at changing anything with that, we would provide those changes.
And do you want to take this opportunity to say how changes, any changes that are going to be made are going to be made available to the public?
Since we're approaching somewhat close to nine o'clock. When we have changes as directed by the Commission to make the changes, or at least look into the changes, we're going to try to, we'll have videotape to go back on to make sure we're trying, we have a list to go back to with those changes and recommendations from this Commission when given direction. In those situations where we're providing new language, what we will likely do is provide the new language as a separate packet almost that clearly shows the old language and what's, what was, was proposed and what that change is highlighted in some way. We would likely look at providing a whole new draft after the fact. If time permits, we'd likely put it in some format, but we want to make sure that those changes are called out clearly as a separate item, so it's clear to the Commissioners and then clear to the public when we upload the agenda. They're not going to happen to sift through pages and pages to know what was talked about and changed, just to provide clarity. And then at follow-up meetings, we would have the ability to open the public comment back up for them to discuss those changes from the public standpoint. So that's how we'll, if, if and when we continue the meeting, in your next packet of staff report stuff, would, it would include those packet changes, and we would specifically call out the section numbers and everything. So you won't get a whole new copy and have to look for it. Make it a bit easier.
So that was all brand new.
No, that I think was in what was posted online last month. Nothing new has been added since, since the last public hearing.
Since April 8th, I believe.
Okay, let's move on to Article Seven, Accessory and Temporary Uses.
I have a feeling we're going to spend a decent amount of time on this section. This, this article, Accessory and Temporary Uses, regulates accessory and temporary uses. It includes accessory structures and buildings and accessory uses that are generally subordinate to the primary or principal use on a property. The subordinate uses, buildings and structures, have to occur in conjunction with the principal use that is allowable, either as a special or permitted use on the property or as a carryover from a non-conforming use in some way. The major, some of the major changes include accessory building allowances. So residential properties now have one detached garage and the ability to have one detached garage and two additional detached buildings at a maximum coverage amount for accessory buildings exclusively at 1,250 square feet and at a maximum height of 18 feet. We're proposing exemptions for up to two small sheds for, for property, residential properties up to 12 square, square feet or less from both the maximum building footprint and law, law coverage calculations. Generally, those aren't built with bases of improved material. We're also allowing, explicitly allowing, non-residential properties to have accessory buildings through the special use approval process at a maximum height of 20 feet. Currently, our code is silent on accessory buildings for non-residential properties. We are also ensuing ADU regulations, especially dwelling units. We're introducing electric vehicle charging equipment regulations, clarifying language related to specific outdoor uses as well. We have introduced language for fleet vehicles, light-duty fleet vehicles for what, to aid in allowing businesses such as like bakeries and, and some contractors to have, you know, Sprinter vans and the like to accommodate their principal use where we currently do not allow them. Now, we're introducing renewable energy source, sources and zoning regulations related to that. We're relaxing regulations for detached garages and carports. We're relaxing regulations related to where allowable solid fences are for residential properties. We have some changes to swimming pools and hot tub regulations. We now explicitly allow generators to encroach into certain setbacks. We have specific regulations to donation boxes for an allowance on a commercial properties only. And then we have specific regulations related to outdoor storage and other accessory outdoor uses, not explicitly listed as a special use. For the outdoor storage, it would only be allowed as an accessory use in the M and M1 District, and they would have to receive special use approval. That's all I have for this, and staff, feel free to interject.
By staff, he means me.
Or I have him.
I just wanted to touch base, so the last thing you said was outdoor storage in the M1 and M. Now, the M1 and M, and I feel bad that the gentleman that was bringing up M District things left. Right now, our M District, which is our most intensive manufacturing, does not allow outdoor operations. Years ago, we injected some code into our zoning ordinance that basically had an enclosure of operations provision. So if any business is existing out there, especially down on Van Industrial where we have some highly intensive outdoor uses happening there, a lot of those are basically non-conformities that have perpetuated over time. But our M District really doesn't allow anything outdoor. We introduced the M1 District, maybe 2018 is when we did that, and we, we did that expressly for the properties that are along Quincy here on the east side of Cass. And that was because we had all those existing buildings over there that were geared towards outdoor stuff, and for years, we thought that might develop as residential and that never happened. So we created this M1 District, which is considered more light industrial, but in that district, we created an allowance for some outdoor activities as a special use, and some outdoor storage as a special use. So for quite some time, our most intensive manufacturing district didn't allow anything outside. Our least intensive manufacturing district did allow stuff outside, so it was kind of reversed. So although you heard a gentleman that said they have an M District property and they had concerns of the ability to do outdoor activities, and I believe the request was, can that be a permitted use, not a special use? Right now, it's not allowed at all. We are saying that that can be requested through this process as a special use, and then some of those, depending on the intensity, have a distance requirement to residential and a screening requirement. Staff feels fairly confident that, number one, because we are now introducing outdoor uses in the M District, and because we can't lose sight that our manufacturing districts are pretty small in comparison to other communities. If you go into Woodridge or Bowling Brook, you have industrial parks where those buildings are, have great distance separation from adjacent residential. We don't have that advantage here in Westmont. Most of our industrial districts, it's, it's in one of three places. It's either here along the tracks, directly adjacent residential. It's either on the south side by Van Industrial, which has multifamily in all directions of that, and then, or up around Ty Warner Park, which has Oakwood and some other developments up there. So staff does feel that requiring a special use for those is still warranted. Now, we can discuss that further if you feel differently. I understand the point of view that the property owner has. We're looking at it from a standpoint of, we're actually giving those businesses and buildings the ability to make requests by introducing the ability to have outdoor uses, however, not go so far as to say it shouldn't be a special use. We think it should be, still be a special use. We think that the planning and zoning in the board would want to know what's being stored outside. Is it being moved around all the time? Is it smelly? You know, do they use equipment that makes noise in the middle of the night or during the day? We think that is all relevant to still scrutinize as a special use. So I just wanted to inject that piece of it.
The example we generally go back to or is related to in the M District is in outdoor storage in general. We had a case here for a landscape contractor in which they wanted to rezone to the M1 District because they have outdoor materials, mulch plantings and the like, and they want to be able to store it on the property and improve the property. We viewed the limited manufacturing district as having kind of more ability to have those uses. When the manufacturing district doesn't allow it, kind of seems non-intuitive because you would think limited would be more limiting in what is allowed there. So for example, in the manufacturing district, as proposed, a landscape contractor, which would be a principal use in that district, could operate if they're, everything's enclosed. If they want outdoor storage of materials and the like, they'd have to come here for a special use, have some design aspects for screening, just to make sure that we're not impacting the surrounding areas. With a lot of these type of uses, the M1 and M District, you see trucks coming in and out all the time. So we want to make sure that we're not having large impacts, especially when we're bordering residential.
I'll just elaborate on that. That was, if, if, for those that were on the Commission, that was Mariani Landscape, and it was probably two years ago now. And if you remember, we did have several of the residents in the townhomes nearby that came out because they were concerned about the smells that the mulch and the other materials had. So we don't want to lose that ability to do that special use.
I think with regard to testimony at the last meeting, do we need to differentiate or are, do we differentiate between outdoor storage vehicles and parking of vehicles in the M District?
I could interject a little bit. So we have what are called accessory parking, which is, would be parking for employees, parking for customers on a certain property. That's largely allowed in most districts where that's a need, but it's accessory parking. Accessory off-street parking, I think is what it's specifically called out as. We are providing provisions for fleet vehicles. Fleet vehicles in this case, the light-duty, which I'm happy to discuss changing some of that language as well, to be more specific. Those would be like your Sprinter vans that can fit in normal spaces, parking spaces. Those aren't your semi-trailers, tractor-trailers. So we have provisions for that. I believe it's two per businesses allowed. Anything more than that, they'd have to come in and ask for approval. In those cases, they have to meet the minimum parking requirement for their use, their principal use on the property, and then addition can have the fleet vehicles.
Scott, can I stop you right there for a second? So fleet is not trucks of, like semi-trucks. Fleet is basically trying to accommodate, because it's not really exclusive to the M Districts, it's, it's in all districts. We have lots of businesses in our B2 or C1 that have some need for a few small fleet vehicles. The example I use is, I believe there's a generator retailer down at 63rd and Fairview that took over the little small engine repair building that's there. And they have two or three little vans that they park there overnight. Technically, our code doesn't say that that's allowed. So what the fleet section is trying to do is create allowances for those businesses that have a few needs to have, park some of those vehicles, and if they have them, how many should they be limited to and where they, where should they park them? Because we don't want them to use them as signage. We don't want them to, if you remember the old Rusko windows at 63rd and Cass, bought two dilapidated U-Hauls and put one on each intersection so that they could advertise. We don't want people to just do that and park vans out there in order to advertise their vehicles. So fleet is to accommodate these small uses. So I'll stop there because I think then you were going to move on to the next one. But we've had several people that have asked us, it sounds like your fleet is really limiting on the outdoor trucks. And we're like, well, no, this is, fleet in this definition is trying to, trying to create a new accommodation for those smaller needs for businesses.
The other section relating to this, so for outdoor storage areas, that's only for storage of goods or merchandise, so it's not applicable in that section. We have in that same section on seven point two, seven point two zero D, other outdoor accessory uses, which is basically somewhat of a catch-all for uses we might not be thinking of to accommodate. In those cases, they have to come in for a special use permit so we know what they're doing related to that outdoor use. Sometimes we get businesses that might have accessory outdoor sales of some point. We have some provisions that allow them to have a certain percentage of outdoor sales in the code as well. But for outdoor storage of trucks, tractor-trailers, logistics type of uses, or repair uses where there's storage of those vehicles outside, it'd be viewed as an accessory use, the other accessory, outdoor, sorry, other outdoor accessory use provisions, and they'd have to come in for approval. So we know how it's going to be impacting those neighboring properties and have the ability to regulate it a bit more.
Scott, can I ask you... Scott, can I ask a question? I think it might be an error, or I don't know if I have. I know that staff may have gotten an older version.
You, yeah, sorry, you have the older version. The current version that the commissioner should have, the outdoor storage section, say, M1 and M.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't update your page.
No, that's okay. And I knew that there was that thing. I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out.
And that has also been reflected and was posted to the website. So, only staff members have an older copy. The public and the commissioners have both been provided with something up to date.
So, Scott, would it be fair, if I have a business and I have a lot of trucking needs, that if it wasn't a special use, by definition of what my business is, I could say, "Well, I have this outdoor storage area for the trucks. I need to add a special use for the outdoor storage area." Is that how it would work?
Correct, yeah.
So, I think you heard Scott say earlier, what we aren't doing in this code is, right now, our current zoning ordinance does not let, does not allow exclusive primary outdoor storage businesses. So, if I bought a vacant lot and put up a fence around it and said I was going to rent it to everyone that wants to store their RV, we don't currently allow that. Because the primary use on that lot would be outdoor storage. Doesn't mean that other businesses that exist on the property, so I'm a manufacturer, that I'm manufacturing something in the building, doesn't mean I can't have trucks stored on the property as an accessory use as an outdoor storage area, or materials as an outdoor storage area. So, it's just the way the code is written, because we are limited in the amount of M districts we have because of the sensitivity to the outdoor uses in adjacent to residential. We do not currently have outdoor storage as a primary use, a primary use on the property on its own. So, but there's a lot of ability for...
Not changing, right?
What's that?
That's not changing.
Could you repeat it, sorry?
I believe you said, "That's not changing."
No, for, in reference to...
The ability to have outdoor storage as a primary use.
Yeah, that is not changing.
It's changing.
Yes, it is. It is, we are not introducing the ability to have outdoor storage as a primary use.
Only as accessories or special use.
Correct.
I just have a couple of things I want to comment. And I have a unique, this is actually a fair amount of area I practice with, specifically with trucks. So, I think maybe where the gentleman's getting, and it might just be a word here. When the term is used in the trucking industry, when they use the term fleet, it usually means a group. And so, if you said, "We allow fleet parking," my thinking is, I can rent that to Amazon. That Amazon trucks, 18-wheelers, the boxes, the vans, Sprinter, whatever it is, that's what I think when I think fleet. And I would think compared to other, otherwise, or comparing to other lots, what you're trying to prevent is someone running a reselling or a parking where you could have multiple different companies or owner-operators coming in. So, that you're trying to prevent. But if you have a fleet like Amazon, you would allow it. That's at least my understanding of how I'm reading it, where there may be some confusion. To me, it wasn't allowed before. So, if you bought something and it's going to throw it up, you kind of took that risk when you knew ahead of time we didn't allow it. But I do understand, and I can appreciate what he said. This actually does cause more uncertainty because the moment you hear, "We allow fleet, but then we don't," in reality, from what their industry considers fleet, I would strongly recommend that we, staff, put in a definition maybe at the end of how we intend to define it, just because that could potentially be an issue down the road. And it would be helpful to have the definition, even if we can't say like, "This is not intended," you know, to avoid, or to avoid any ambiguity. It's not intended to mean this.
Yeah, and I think our attorney also had, we had a discussion with him related to that in particular. We think, I believe we want, right now, we just categorize as light-duty motor vehicles. I think we need to provide clear definition related to that.
We have a definition in another chapter of the Village Code of Ordinances for commercial vehicles, which is defined as vehicles with license plate classifications greater than D. And so, the state lists license plate classifications based on weight and capacity of trucks, et cetera.
They skip like every other letter, like D, F, H, for reasons based on understanding.
So, that's how we define it in, I think it's Chapter 78. And we want to take that definition for a commercial vehicle, basically incorporate it into the zoning ordinance, or at least reference it clearly. Right now, there is a reference to Chapter 78, but it's not to that specific section. So, maybe it'd be better just to take that whole definition and put in the zoning ordinance, and then maybe have a better definition, to your point, of what a fleet vehicle is. It's not a commercial vehicle as defined, and then maybe provide some examples. If you look up online from a zoning perspective what a fleet vehicle is, it generally means those light vans and stuff. It doesn't mean a semi-truck. But I could see the confusion. A fleet of vehicles could be construed as a large group of semi-trucks or other commercial vehicles.
No, that's, it's spot-on. So, I think that that would be incredibly helpful, at least. It tells people yes or no whether it's allowed. And then, I guess the question is, do we allow it anywhere in the village? Is there, and I recognize that part of the difficulty here might be the fact that we're eventually doing a comprehensive plan. And we probably would love Ty Warner Park not to show up as a manufacturing zoning, the park itself. But I guess the question would be, long-term, are we kind of getting an idea that we're going to start making an area more manufacturing and it's not going to be there? Are we moving it elsewhere? Or is it just going to kind of always be really light manufacturing in the...
Go ahead.
Well, the current comprehensive plan, in particular to the Ty Warner area, actually listed it as light manufacturing. So, the current comprehensive plan is already trying to downplay the intensity of that area. Now, I can't speak to how the new comp plan will try to address, but it is odd that our premier park is the biggest manufacturing parcel in town. And that predates when I worked here. But parks are an allowed use in the M district, surprisingly. I hesitate to say where we're going with M district stuff. I don't think that we're looking at necessarily expanding it. But, you know, the office market has changed. There's a lot of dynamic happening in terms of how people are trying to use those right now. So, I think what it is, is right now, we don't have a lot of property that can accommodate what you consider fleet very well. Because even though we try to call it an industrial park, it really wasn't built for semi-truck at a regular basis, you know? In fact, Ty Warner is only served by one traffic light, which is over there by Chipotle. And I think we all know that traffic light does not support truck traffic very well. So, I think that with what we're doing, the reason we're not trying to introduce that as a primary use is, we don't know that the area can support it efficiently.
Sure. No, and that makes sense. When you mentioned the PI districts that we're proposing, would Ty Warner Park be an example of something that you'd want? So, potentially, if that were to occur, this giant area would have only like an outline of manufacturing. And the biggest parcel, which makes up probably a third at least, maybe nearly half, would be PI.
In theory, yes. But we probably won't force the park district to do any rezonings.
But from a comprehensive plan, that's...
From a comprehensive plan, yes.
That makes sense.
I'm sorry, I got, I had two notes. Love the fire pit. That stopped an argument with the police. That was wonderful. Fire stack, you had defined on one of them that there is a side setback, but I couldn't find what it was or where it was. I know it looks like there's a rear setback. But it doesn't look like it's defined where the stack is. I just wasn't sure.
We have an allowance in the encroachment table. So, that's on page, what, that's 74? And it's number 22. Firewood stack, not to exceed four feet in height. And then, it's allowed, or not allowed in the street setback, it's not allowed. And it is allowed in the side street, or side setback and the rear setback.
Got it. This is, it's allowed in the setback?
Yes.
Understood, sorry. I was thinking there is a setback and I couldn't find the requirement. Okay.
Sorry, what number was that on the sheet?
The, in the encroachment table?
Yeah.
It's 22.
It should be in the middle of page 7-4.
Yeah.
And that's, a lot of that's carried over from current code. You can see the red, we're reducing the language. It was pretty specific for some reason.
Scott, since you're in the encroachment table, I don't think we talked about porches?
We can delve into it. I think we touched on it at the last meeting. And I'm happy to discuss it more. We have provided now, in our current code, we don't have provisions related to encroachment for porches, front porches in particular. We're allowing front porches to encroach into that front yard setback. I believe it's eight feet into that front yard setback specifically. Front porches are defined as having a canopy over it or roofed. It wouldn't be equated to a deck. And we can have that discussion if we want to allow that in the front yard setback to a degree. The reason we're doing that is oftentimes at the permitting stage for new houses and existing houses, especially in the downtown area, we're not able to permit those, it's, front porches to be in those setbacks currently because they're considered part of the primary structure. In this case, because we're allowing them as accessory structures that are just attached to the building, we have the ability to allow them to encroach. Generally, planning practice, we want to promote...
Eyes on the street.
Yeah, eyes on the street, traditional neighborhoods. When our, when sprawling happened, it took a lot of that away. But that's generally good planning practice, especially in your TOD areas near the train.
So, we could, I'm glad that you guys, that it's eight feet. What I was afraid is that if you did it, that it would only be like, say, four feet, which is a plainless porch. But like, so, eight feet people could actually use. But is it that, do you allow eight feet of porch? Because it has a roof, but, but not, not if, if it doesn't have a roof, then you wouldn't?
If it, if it doesn't have a roof, I believe it'd either be categorized as a deck or a front landing. Those front landings could be up to, I think it's 100 square feet in the current code. And that's carried over. And that's to allow people to step out onto their property safely.
And then, I just, that was a, and it's clear, is it, in the contextual setbacks, that porches don't apply? Is it to contextual setbacks?
Yeah, so, porches are viewed separately from the building now. Those porches are considered accessory. So, if the conceptual setback allows the house to go farther up, the porch can go that extra eight feet as well.
Right. I just, I just imagine neighbors saying, like, "Why can't I build my house up that far? My neighbor's built his porch up that far." And, and then, just a clarification, like, anyway, it's not, I mean, things are always going to come up. But just to...
No, that's a good, good comment.
Can I, can I ask a question related to that? So, for the contextual setback, if my neighbor's porch...
We wouldn't include it.
So, you'd be using the primary house to delineate the line that then allows my contextual setback for the front of my house? And then, I can add a porch to encroach eight feet outside?
That's my understanding of how the conceptual setbacks work. I know Kirk's in the code right now, so he might correct me.
That's, that's the intent. I think we could, as suggested, make it that clearer than it is, that the porch is not included either in measuring your neighboring property's setback or in determining what your contextual setback is. We're measuring to the front building wall, not, not including the porch.
The living space, basically. And that makes sense to me, to do it that way.
Yeah. The next, just because I see lots of porches and just how, how things are done over time, is the next step then, of course, from a homeowner, is that they'll enclose those porches. At least, there's lots of enclosed porches in Chicago area. So, is there, if you see someone trying to enclose their porch, do you put up a stop-port order? Is that the procedure?
That's going to happen.
I'm not at liberty to discuss code enforcement, how they operate generally. But the...
I can.
First, for porches in particular, they are outlined in the encroachment table as being open on at least three sides. So, non-enclosed, just roofed.
And so, we would consider trying to enclose one needing a permit. And whenever we see one without permit occurring, we try to intervene.
Yep.
Sorry, I got one more. It's the hot tub, just out of curiosity. I'm curious if anyone else, I don't have one, but I would like the idea of having one. That's, but having a fence around a hot tub seems a little excessive, no? Just in this era, there's plunge pools now. I know people are jumping in cold water. I don't necessarily jump onboard that train. But, you know, there's a big trend right now from a fitness standard for plunge pools. Hot tubs, they always had the covers on top. So, for me, it's not the attractive nuisance where you can fall in. Is there a way we can potentially revise this? Or is there something in particular that we're following suit? The pools are supposed to be fenced by state law. So, I follow that. I don't think it applies to hot tubs.
I don't know off the top of my head. I know the institution for hot tubs in particular was proposed through the building department's review as being allowed because it's ambiguous in our current code. We can certainly look into it to see if it needs to be required or not, if we're just matching other code sections. But I understand the point, for usually they're not at ground level either. They're usually above anyway.
And I would be fully supportive, just from, from a staff perspective. If it's required when it's not in user operation, that it's covered, that makes sense. I understand the safety aspect of it. I think it would actually look sillier from a planning perspective of you have a, just a, you know, 20-square-foot area fenced off.
How tall, how tall does the fence have to be?
Is it four feet, 40 inches?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's either three or four feet.
For the statewide.
Yeah, it's being derived out of a safety measure. That's not something that we're, like, we picked and said, "I want to see you in your hot tub," you know, type scenario. So...
I had, I had that circled as well, as, as being a little...
We can, we can confirm that with the building department where they're pulling that piece of code.
We can also look at pulling it out as a separate thing and just regulate it for setbacks rather than throwing it with the pool regulations.
And like I said, they all, they all have the tops too. So, to me, that, that is the safety factor.
Let me see, if you don't mind me, is just outdoor seating? I think someone mentioned at a previous meeting, it says about, like, having a fence around that. But then I, is that, is that like, that's not the same as, like, say, businesses on Casper. Do they have to...
I want to make a clear distinction between different outdoor dining practices with the village. On Quincy Avenue here, the new brick paver area, with your resurface, that is considered outdoor dining on village-owned property. So, that's in the public right-of-way. We have a separate process of outdoor dining in those circumstances through the clerk's office. So, does that control that? They have separate code into the municipal code. For outdoor, the proposed language here is for new outdoor patios because we don't currently have regulations to even allow them technically, specifically outlined in the code. So, this is just for those new outdoors. We have provision, outdoor dining, we have provisions implemented in the code for allowances. I think it's four seats for a lot of the downtown businesses that maybe have some room to allow those outdoor seats that don't get in the way of traffic of anything on the property, that's egress issue.
But if there's, if there's a storefront that has, like, say, like, five foot setback from the sidewalk, do they have to have a fence around those tables?
If they have only four seats, I believe it is, no. They're exempt from those regulations. Anything more than that, they would technically have to abide by those or come in.
I'm thinking in front of, I know, like, say, the restaurant need to build that big part to their side. But I think on their front, I think they also have a few seats. Do they, no?
I believe those are fenced in, though. They're kind of big closed with a canopy, I believe, configuring.
There is a fence on those tables that are on the front.
On Cass.
So, I had some questions. I grilled Adam before the meeting because this is something new that we're proposing. new that we're proposing, and we're coming from the standpoint of, if someone builds a new restaurant, the patio is an extension of the restaurant, and it should be a pleasant environment. So it should basically carry your landscape around it, fence it in, make it something that is secure. Now, there are a lot of ways to allow administrative approval of stuff, so in the downtown or if I was in a shopping center, there are ways to dismiss the landscape requirements, but any request to remove a fence requirement, the way it's currently written, would be a variance, and that may be a bit harsh. We were coming from the standpoint of, if a new building is built, we were looking at it from all aspects of, well, someone might have five feet and be able to put six tables outside, and should that really be fenced? The option is, we can remove the fence requirement, but I can tell you this, that I was the planner that did the neat patio.
Okay.
And that proposal, when it first came into us, was basically a slab with a cover over it, and anyone could have backed their car right up into the slab where people were parking, or where people were eating. So staff had to say, "Well, you should probably build a curb and put some landscape and try to control the people that are drinking so that they don't just wander out into the parking lot where a car is coming through," and try to sensitively work with the property owner to figure out how to make it work. If we had these ordinances, then we could have easily said, "Well, no, you have to fence it, you have to, you know, think thoughtfully about how you place it." So we're happy to modify that, that's what it is right now as proposed.
I like the idea of fence or other appropriate enclosure as determined by the zoning administrator because you see planners oftentimes that form a barrier around an outdoor seating area that are very attractive, add a safety element, maybe even more so than a fence. So just build in a little flexibility, might be a good idea.
I would second that as well. I think having an option is better than saying, "You must have a fence."
And foundational landscaping also, I think there's oftentimes not room for that, but...
And there's already provision in here that says that it can be flexed, so...
But like, a barrier of some kind is what we want. So it can be landscaping, it can be mobile planters for just the one month, it could be a fence, some barrier, but it doesn't have to be a fence.
And I think we can make that.
Yeah, we'll look into it. I think the major thing is, neat's a great example. Neat had to come in for site plan approval for that patio. In the new code, something like that wouldn't need site plan approval. That's why we're implementing design regulations. And we want to make it easier for them to utilize their property how they deem necessary, so that would just be a permit that would come in. If they're meeting the standards, we could approve it.
Yeah. So what's, Scott, we haven't got to the approval processes, and we won't tonight, but there's a lot more administrative approvals, which means that less and less will come before planning and zoning of the board, and so we were trying to kind of build in some design requirements so that if you meet these design requirements, then you don't have to go through these processes. So if, it sounds like the way we can write it with a fence or barrier or, you know, something that we could do, we can still satisfy that without completely just giving up the idea that there should be some separation that occurs there. Commissioner Thomas, did you have a comment?
I just, watching the time, I just want to thank staff and the consultant and all the work you've done to bring this stuff up to date, and it's a lot of, obviously, a big job and a lot of work, and it's all been appreciated. I'd like to thank you all for your efforts.
Mr. Chair, before we say our goodbyes, I didn't hear direction, so Commissioner Sharp brought up the floor height on a couple of those structures. Now, what was not being proposed was that we were changing the ultimate height. I believe I can state that Commissioner Sharp is somewhat an expert in those areas. Would it be appropriate if staff took the heights that he provided to us and modified those for the text changes? So we're not changing the ultimate heights, which I think is a much bigger discussion, but the ultimate floor heights on that first floor and that penthouse floor, I do think that he's probably more on trend than we are, so would you be comfortable if staff made those changes since we're going to make those changes for the next meeting?
I certainly would.
Do you want to straw poll that one real quick?
It's like a lot of head nods.
Any objections? Everyone agree?
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is there, like, we, I do have comments on ADUs, but I could, I know it's late, so are we, is it, will there be another opportunity later?
So do you want to resume with Section 7? Okay, we will resume with Section 7 next time.
But yes, to answer his question, he can go back and ask, obviously, about ADUs at the next public hearing if you like.
Sure. I don't, I just have, like, it's in regards to heights, and the basement depth is kind of silly, that's what's written in it, but, yeah, we could...
Oh, yeah.
I have a lot of comments left on 7 as well.
Oh, okay. So we'll take up, we're left off, and yeah, if you want to go back to ADUs, certainly can. So we'll continue this next time, but...
What's that date, June?
That will be June 11th, second Wednesday, at 6:00. So we don't need a, yeah, we do need a motion and second to continue to a date certain.
Continue the public hearing, which is still open to...
To continue the public hearing to June 11th, 2025, at the regular PCC meeting at 6:00. And I have a motion.
Motion, Simpson.
Motion, Simpson, second.
Second.
Second, Thomas. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Donahue?
Yes.
Chairperson Kermichael?
Yes.
Okay, and under new business continuing for tonight, there is none. Open forum, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address any issue that was not on our agenda? Seeing none, we've already said, okay, so that will be continued at, what was the date? June 11th?
June 11th.
June 11th. And, but next Tuesday night, we'll still have a regular...
Wednesday.
Planning and zoning meeting, so.
Wednesday night.
Did I say Tuesday?
Did.
Next Wednesday night, the 14th of May.
We will have three separate zoning cases to be heard that night, so if, please let me know if you are not able to attend as soon as possible.
But we won't be discussing this.
We will not be discussing this. This will be saved for June 11th at the normal PCC meeting, which we will likely have one case for, so.
There was talk over a meeting after that, are we, did that get scrapped? Like, before Memorial Day? Was there a talk about doing three in May?
We were looking at three, but, yeah, the chair decided...
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Simpson.
Sharp.
Sharp. And show of hands, all in favor? This meeting is adjourned.